Okay, if I get everybody's attention, we're a little bit late, but I wanted to make an announcement. If you wanted to speak, anybody from the public, please see Carissa Green, who's raising her hand, and fill out one of these yellow forms, and then I can call it. I've got some now, so those of you that filled them out, you're good. But if anybody else wants to, we will open the meeting with public participation, and that'll be a good opportunity for you to speak. We'll get started in just a minute. Okay, good morning. It's good to see everybody. Thank you for driving all the way over here. And we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have a roll call, and then we will have public participation. Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Gertman. Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry. Ms. Post.
Here.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Brower.
Here, thank you. Okay, welcome to the workshop on water quality, always an important topic in Volusia and one that's often discussed in the public. We have a few people that would like to speak, so I will call on you. There's also anybody who might want to make a comment after presentations, you'll have another opportunity there. So we'll start with Stephen Kittner. Okay. You can speak after, that would be fine, I'll make a note. Ronnie Mills. I thought I saw you back there.
Good morning, everyone. I didn't know I was going to be the one starting off this today, but here we go. Let me introduce myself, my name is Ronnie Mills, I live at 1321 Jackson Woods Road, Deland. I'm kind of unique here this morning, because actually, I am in the septic industry. We don't like to call them septic tanks anymore, we like to call them onsite systems, because they have improved tremendously within the last 20 to 30 years. Also, I hold a wastewater license, so I know both sides of the industry, from a municipal side and a private side in the septic industry. And the other unique thing is actually know it from the political side, being that I sit on the PLDRC, and we have a lot of these things come to our attention while we're on the board. First and foremost, I'd like to say, being the lifelong resident here, I do know that the, I've seen the growth that we've experienced, and I see the water quality issues come along with the growth. I would suggest that if we decide to do any type of municipal sanitary sewers, that we take in mind that we don't want to sit and promote high-density growth. I'm not against growth, it's just the fact that we need to make sure that we protect our natural resources. And part of that is to do the types of systems that we have on the septic side. The septic side is, I'm sure, and I guess this is more of a question, but the DEP offered to do a feasibility study for the springs, the counties that were affected by the springs, and I just wanted to make sure that we know what the costs are going to be involved. The last thing we want to do is take and put people out of their homes with special assessments, and also to make sure that the cost going forward, that we have a means of paying for that. When the legislature introduced this bill back on the Springs Initiative Act, they knew that it was going to cost billions, and one of the biggest problems they knew we were going to face was going to be the cost issue. So sometimes, the benefit, the cost outweighs the benefit, and we need to make sure that going forward, that we take a slow-moving process and make sure that we're doing the right thing, regardless of which way we go. The DEP has offered incentives to try it, and grants, and we know that they did offer on the INRBs, the legislature required the Department of Health to come up with a way to have a passive-type system, which was being nitrogen reduced, it was in-ground nitrogen-reducing biofilters, and that was the passive way. And so what happens is, is that they had a grant that you could apply for to upgrade your system, but we know that that is already out of money. So we don't want to get into the situation where we're expecting grants and end up costing us in the long run.
Thank you. You're about 30 seconds over, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I understand, and what I'm, if I'm here to answer any questions you may have about ATUs, which is the onsite systems, and also remember that one of the biggest and largest municipal bankruptcies come from Jefferson, Alabama, and they were in what the major implementing was implementing sanitary sewers, and we don't want to go down that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Haley Bush.
Good morning, council members. I'll be brief, so we can get the show on the road, but my name is Haley Bush, and I'm with 1,000 Friends of Florida. We're a statewide smart growth advocacy organization, and our theory of change, our mission, is financially sound community planning to protect our natural resources. I've prepared some written statements here, but back in November, we had the opportunity to partner with some of your community members, with the St. John's Riverkeeper and the Stetson Institute for Water and Environmental Resilience. They graciously hosted us on their Sandra Stetson Aquatic Center campus. We did a 2070 workshop, and I know Councilmember Brower and Councilmember Wheeler, you both were there, and appreciate you coming out. And I recall Councilmember Brower stood up and said, you know, "We need to have a bigger discussion here," and that's, I think, what we're doing here today, so I really appreciate you, you know, getting us started, reexamining our water quality issues, not just in Volusia, but things that are challenging the state. So I think everyone in this room understands that perhaps the biggest threat to our lands and waters comes from an increasing population and encroaching development to our natural areas. When I was here in the fall, I had the chance to see your three outstanding Florida springs, Gemini, De Leon, and Blue. I grew up in Gainesville, so I, you know, paddled the Itchitucknee and had to traverse those northern central Florida counties to see springs, and what you all have here, right in your backyard and kind of a, you know, close area, this is unparalleled in the state. I think clean water is the ultimate benefit to this county, and is a huge part of, you know, what makes this place so special. So just to be brief, wrap things up, our 2070 workshop yielded good recommendations for how county leadership can continue and strengthen your environmental protections through growth management tools. Our land use attorney on staff, Jane West, provided some analysis of what the comp plan has written down, so I won't go into that today, but I am in touch with county staff and look forward to sharing these in more detail at a later time. We hope to be a resource to you and your staff going forward, so thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you. Nancy Vaughn. If you would, when you come up, just tell us where you're from, and when you get up there, tell me if you can see the time on that screen that's really not pointed at you. Is the clock on there too, Mr. Vaughn?
Okay. I'll be brief.
No, I'm just trying to get everybody the heads up, because it's a new system, instead of the clock down here, it's now all, thank you.
Very good. Good morning, Chairman Brower, and honorable members of the County Council. My name is Nancy Vaughn, I'm from Port Orange, and I am speaking today as the Natural Resources Chair of the League of Women Voters of Volusia County. The League has long been a supporter of the efforts of this county to identify and remediate water quality issues. We lent our support to the Sales Tax Initiative and to the Renewal of the Echo in Volusia Forever. We have relied upon the expertise of county staff, professionals, on many occasions to educate our members and the community at large on the challenges we face due to growth and its effect on water. We are all here for the same reason, we all care about the same thing, clean water. The county staff members here today are experienced, educated professionals and experts in their respective fields. They've spent their entire careers managing the extremely complicated processes to clean our water using proven scientific methods. One of the county's recent successes has been anticipating infrastructure needs to stop further reliance on septic systems, just one of the components of our water problem. While it's important to pursue innovative ideas, it's crucial to be certain that all initiatives follow a peer-reviewed scientific process to make the best use of county resources and tax dollars. In my time serving with other organizations such as the Environmental Advisory Board of Port, of, element, sorry, Environmental Advisory Board of the City of Port Orange, the Volusia Water Alliance, and the Economic Council of Volusia Flagler, I understand the importance of aligning for the common good. I've come to know and appreciate the knowledgeable people in our community, and I value their dedication, working together, supporting the science, we can solve our water prices. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriella Milch.
Good morning, councilpeople. My name is Gabrielle Milch, and I work for the St. John's Riverkeeper, which is a nonprofit organization that helps to give a voice to the water of the St. John's River. And our river, we're right smack in the middle of the St. John's River, and we have a lot of water quality issues and some other environmental issues with invasive plants, we have some wastewater discharges, we have septic tanks that leach into our groundwater and our drinking water, we have saltwater intrusion, that's part of the problem here. I don't know how many of you have your own private supply wells and supply your own water, and if you have septic and sewer, I've learned over the years, as I used to be an extension agent for UFIFIS, that you can get saltwater intrusion into your well and not even know it, and your septic system also should be tested and pumped out probably every five years if you have it, and it doesn't treat nutrients but 30%, so there's 70% pollutant loading that goes into our groundwater without advancement of our wastewater treatment systems for onsite storage. So I'm so thankful that you all are here today to talk about this very important, you know, issue, and water is one of our most precious resources we have in Florida, and clean drinking water is something that's going, as more people come, is going to be something that we're going to have to really think about and work hard to do, and we want it to be swimable and fishable and paddle-able. Right now, I'm on a journey, a quest, to paddle the whole St. John's River, so I'm almost done with the Middle Basin, that'll be 100 miles that I've paddled in the last couple of weeks, and why does that matter? Because I'm turning 60 this year, it's self-effiling, but also, this is the 50th anniversary of the Clean Water Act, so it's been 50 years since our waters were on fire in some places in the, you know, up in the north and things, and these discharges from pollutants, you know, we should make the people who do the pollution clean up the pollution and pay the price instead of us, the taxpayers, having to pay for that. And I'm so thankful you're here today, and I hope you learned something, thanks.
Thank you. And the Chair of the Volusia County Soil and Water Conservation Board, Wendy Anderson. You're actually here on behalf of yourself, though, correct?
I am speaking on behalf of myself this morning, yes, thank you. Good morning, Chairman Brower and councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be with you, and I will keep my comments brief, I won't go over. So I just wanted to say that we have very simple solutions here, actually. These complex problems, we have simple solutions. And the solution is to change the language in our land development regulations from shall, from should, to shall, from encourage to require. We need to change the, we need to change our language to make our solutions mandatory. Last fall, I sat with four of you for two days at the Marine Resources Council Low-Impact Development Conference in Rockledge, and there, we heard from experts from all over the state about how LID, low-impact development tools, can address our nutrient filtration and aquifer recharge needs in our upland areas where the problems arise, which helps solve our problems down below in our waterways, in the IRL, and in the river. Some of those experts even came from our own county. I thought today's workshop was actually supposed to be about that, inviting some of these experts, including local ones like Dr. Jason Evans and Kelly McGee, to talk about this, to educate the rest of the council and the county staff about how LID can address some of our most urgent problems in the county. And I am thrilled that we finally added Dr. Pierce Jones to the agenda, as he is, in fact, one of the two fathers of LID in Florida, and he will inspire all of you with real-world examples of where LID principles have been applied in projects that are now highly successful developments. I was hoping we could talk about how, with steady grassroots efforts, coupled with a lot of wine and coffee drinking between environmental leaders and developers, the community has started to make LID a new norm for developments, despite the fact that policymakers at the county level and the city levels are being slow to catch on. Why? Why is that happening? It's happening because these tools are cost-effective solutions for developers. They actually save them money in the short term, in the long term, or both, and they make for much, much more marketable products for homebuyers. With lower development costs and higher sales prices, and with a higher demand for better developments that are still in short supply, developers can win too with these solutions. We wouldn't be, they wouldn't be sitting down with us environmental radicals and asking us how to do this if it didn't make business sense for them. I need you all to shed your 20th-century views of environmentalists as radicals, and realize that the new brand of environmental protection integrates what is good for people and for the economy too. That is what we're pushing for. Business is already taking the lead. When is government going to catch up? I'll repeat, the cost of the county is about 30 minutes of staff time to do a search and replace in the county's land development code, simply find all the shoulds and replace with shalls. Find all the encourage and replace with require. Thank you.
Thank you.[1119.45][1119.45][applause] What a radical.[1123.58][1123.58][laughter] Elizabeth Lovett.
Lydia Lovett. I'm here as an advocate for the environment with Volusia and Brevard County Environmental Alliance. I also sit on the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Project Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'm the Chair of Climate and Environmental Justice for the West Volusia NAACP. I'm speaking on behalf of water quality, and I just want to echo a little bit of what Dr. Anderson just said on the low-impact development. I was really encouraged to see you, Mr. Brower, and you, Ms. Post, speak on that, because it absolutely affects our water quality downstream, and it is the largest impact on water quality. I called into a radio show a couple of weeks ago to ask Mr. Robbins what his position was on clearcutting our wetlands. I see this as a direct, a direct cause of the water quality problems that we are seeing the symptoms of in our drinking water and in the Indian River Lagoon. It's interesting that we have this very unique opportunity right now. We are in crisis, and a crisis is an opportunity to grow in a positive direction or to go backwards. I think we all understand we can't go backwards. And how we ended up in this situation was, and it's not this council's fault, it came from prior councils, staffing our advisory councils with those who are in land development, and we now have a land development code that favors clearcutting, that favors wetland destruction. It's extremely important, Mr. Robbins, what your position is on wetland destruction, because I do understand that you had prior businesses that may have been responsible for some of that. It's extremely important to me that members of this council who have a conflict of interest because the decisions they make may enter to their financial interests, their financial gain, that's extremely frustrating to me, because when we're looking at these new codes, I need to know that they're looking at what the citizens want and what we need for water quality. The Marine Resource Council that Wendy Anderson talked about with low-impact development being discussed is directly related to that water quality. Our vast destruction of vast wetlands and ecosystems has led to this, and there is a solution, emergency, low-impact development. This council can do it. Brevard County is being encouraged to do it, and we don't have a second to wait on it. We're in crisis, and I've been watching dead manatees come on shore as a symptom of that crisis, and you have an opportunity to ride it here, now, and I applaud you for having this conference, thank you.
Thank you. And where is Stephen? See, he's still in the back. I'm just going to warn you that if you, you're welcome to wait to the end of the presentation, but my schedule says it'll wind up at 5:30. We, so we will take a lunch break, and you can talk before lunch if you want, or, okay.
My hope had been to speak after we see the presentation of what my thoughts are on the presentation, but that's fine, I did read the documents last night, so I can do that. All right, so I'm Stephen Kittner, and Vice President of West Volusia Audubon. I was your Environment Management Director for 21 years, I was your Growth Resource Management Director for about six months, and I do a lot of other jobs as a volunteer now, retired 12 years ago, very active in the environment. So some of the things that you see from us is the Volusia Water Alliance and our symposium and our festival, which we had in the past two years, we're bringing it back to the festival again, and the Volusia Springs Alliance, and the General Springs Alliance, all projects for West Volusia Audubon. Water is very, very important. We've been at this for a long time, I've looked at those documents that you put in the, in the agenda item, fantastic, it's kind of amazing, because I worked on a lot of those projects, but I did it, you know, these little pieces, right? You see all of that put together, and folks, let me tell you, you can be very, very proud of what you've been able to accomplish and do. I've worked very closely with the development community all through all these years, trying to produce better developments, I think we've done that. I think we've got, one thing is when you only look forward for new regulations, you can't deal with 100,000 septic tanks you have today, you've got to deal with that, you've got to deal with a portion of those, they've got to be taken care of, they've got to be designed for that. So you've got to look at what the impacts are of developments that's happened in Volusia County over all these years, since the 70s, and coming with a plan, which I think you've got. You've got a great document that shows the future, shows what you need to do, nothing can be tweaked and improved, all documents can, but it really, you look at the body of projects you've done, it's great, you've got some great staff on board that are making that happen, they're here for you, they, people always tell me, staff this, staff that, staff's job is to carry out the goals and mission that council sets with the resources that you give them to do it. And it's an important thing, if you've got to understand that you all set the tone, you set the direction, you approve the regulations, and you provide the funding, and that's a project that you have been doing, it's a project I hope you will continue to do. I'm a very active volunteer for you, I do lots of public speaking, lots of projects, just got to do in, being a volunteer at the Wildlife Festival down in Lyon, so I'm here for you, if you ever need to talk to me, I'm kind of crawling back out of that COVID hiding place I've been for the past two years, coming more active again. So thank you all very, very much, not going to take much of your time, just to let you know, I do appreciate what you're doing, that you've got a good plan, you've got great staff, let's continue forward with that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. George, I'm going to ask you in just a minute to kind of introduce who's going to speak and give us a breakdown, but I want to ask the council, as the presenters present, we can either interrupt with questions or hold the questions till the end of their presentation, because they may get answered during, and so it would probably be a good idea just to jot down a question and wait till they're done, unless anybody has a different, is that okay? Does that work for you? Hold the questions? All right. George, who are we going to hear from first, and second, and third?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, today we do have a really good lineup of some of that great staff that Mr. Kittner was referring to, thanks. Steve, the check will be in the mail. Thank you for all his years of work here, he certainly taught me a lot back in the day as well, very fine individual. Today, before you, you have Penn Bartlett, he's our Director of Public Works, and under his leadership, our Public Works Department has undertaken the Quality Assurance Plan that we've talked so much about, and helped carry out a lot of the projects that were identified in the original water quality plan. We also have Ginger Adair, who is our Director of Environmental Services, and her team works tirelessly to provide us data, help us with putting together these projects, works with the development community on a daily basis to make sure that people are following the rules that we have, and give guidance to our internal staff. And then we also have Mike Ulrich, who is our Director of Utilities. Mike, of course, we started giving him the moniker Aquaman, because he had done so much work, he and his team were getting grants that we have used, again, to carry out a lot of these projects and continue to carry out, and Mike's knowledge of the role that utilities play in water quality is, I think, unmatched, and his creativity, again, in finding funding and getting these projects going, I think, is, was very lucky to have Mike and his team. So you'll hear from each of them today, and we have some other speakers I know coming in as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Reckonwald, Mr. Chair, honorable councilmembers, it's a, it's a pleasure to be here today to talk about our water resources, our environment, that I think everybody in this room can agree we are blessed to have in the state of Florida and Volusia County. And the three of us up here represent a multitude of staff that work hard every day, whether it's the equipment operator running the street sweeper, or the utility plant operator, or environmental folks who are out there in the boats collecting samples, or permitting, that work every day to ensure that we are doing our best to preserve and restore the fantastic natural resources that Volusia County has, and that really lend itself to folks wanting to live here, wanting to visit here, and that is not lost on staff, and that's something we take very seriously. We will have a pretty lengthy staff presentation that's going to outline, you know, some of the regulations involved with water quality, as well as, we're going to go through a list of those water bodies, those precious resources we have in Volusia County. We're going to give a brief history and timeline of our efforts in Volusia County to identify the issues associated with pollution and impairment, and some of the steps and some of the goals that have been outlined by prior councils, and then we're going to talk about what we've done to address those And then we're going to talk about what we've done to address those issues and what we're doing moving forward to address those issues. We're going to talk about some legislation that affects how we can, you know, clean up our water bodies, whether there's money available for that, and also discuss some upcoming projects. And then we're going to kind of look back a little bit again after the end of the presentation, and we're going to look forward and talk about some of the things we can do. So maybe council has some input on additional goals that we can add and amend to our water quality plan. And then following our presentation, we have Dr. Pierce Jones, who's the Program Director for Resource Efficient Communities. He's going to speak... He's an expert on low-impact development, and he's going to give a presentation on that following our presentation. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. So getting us started, you know, I think it's important to understand what regulations and what role the county plays in the overall protection of our water resources. And this slide kind of shows the layered approach that most everybody's familiar with, whether it's the federal government and the regulations that they hand down through the EPA or the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as our state regulators, either through the DEP or the Water Management Districts, and then finally, local governments, Volusia County, and the 16 municipalities. Just a kind of a brief overview. It was mentioned, it's the 50th anniversary of the Clean Water Act. It was really codified in 1972 with multiple amendments thereafter. It really focused on point source solution. So point source solution is very important to understand the difference between point source and non-point source. For many years, going back to the dawn of time, human beings have been concerned about our water resources. And really, up until about recent times, in the last 50 or 75 years, that really concerned with getting clean drinking water, disposing of wastewater in such a way that didn't, you know, cause disease through unsanitary environment, and then avoid flooding, whether getting caught up in floods or your house or something like that. That was primarily what human beings and human civilization concerned itself with, really, until the Industrial Revolution and the amount, you know, we started to see the effects of what direct discharge of chemicals and other pollutants into our water bodies started. You know, there was a significant environmental movement in the early part of the 19th century and carried through and after World War II. A lot of these laws that, on the federal level, that we have to, you know, are regulated by, were a result of that. And so point source solution, think a factory discharging directly into a river, a wastewater plant discharging directly into a lake or stream. And also, in the '80s, they also changed or added the discharge of municipal stormwater system pipes directly into lakes, rivers, and streams. So those are point source solutions. That is, was one of the initial primary focuses of the early laws and regulations. And a lot of those, you know, issues were easily... I don't want to say easy to address, but they were easily identifiable. You see a factory, you see a pipe, it's going in the water. Let's figure out a way to stop that, treat that water before it goes in. As time evolved, we started getting a better understanding of what non-point source solution or pollution has, what effects it has on our environment. So think, basically, anything that, when it rains, the rainwater turns into stormwater runoff, what does that pick up? And where does that end up? It ends up in our lakes, rivers, and streams. And that consists primarily of nutrients: phosphorus and nitrogen. And that's a lot of what we're focusing on today, because those nutrients lead to algae growth. Algae growth blocks sunlight. Sunlight reduces the growth of sea grass. And I think we all know what the results of that can be. So getting back to the federal regulators, we've got the U.S. EPA, the Clean Water Act, as shown there, as well as other, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Resource Conservation Recovery Act, that covers a lot of leaking underground storage tanks, stuff like that. And of course, the Superfund Act, which deals with large-scale pollution sites. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, they primarily deal with dredging, any permits related to construction along U.S. waters, and they do have a hand in wetland protection as well, from a federal standpoint. Some of the state agencies we deal with, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, they permit all our drinking water. They regulate the MPDS permits for all the local municipalities on behalf of the federal government. They deal with sovereign submerged lands. They also handle environmental resource permitting. They are also the primary driver of the TMDL and BMAP process, which is what we... It's the process that is primarily used to deal with impaired water bodies within the state. And they handle wastewater permitting, as well as septic system or OSTDS permitting, either through themselves or the DOH. So real quick, you know, I mentioned TMDLs and BMAPs, which are... TMDL stands for Total Maximum Daily Loading. BMAP stands for Basin Management Action Plan. And so that is the framework that is used to restore water bodies that have been identified as impaired. So this chart kind of represents the process. And if you notice, it's a circular process. It's a process that is continual. The regulators will set the standards and say, okay, this is the amount of pollutants that are allowable in these waters. Folks like our environmental management folks or the Water Management District will go out and test that water to see where those pollutants lie. And then if those pollutants are too high, those water bodies are declared impaired. And then there's a process that the state goes through to establish the TMDL, which is they're saying, okay, this is the amount of pollutants that are going in. In order to get this water body to an acceptable level, we have to reduce those pollutants by a certain percentage. And then the Basin Management Action Plan is where you bring in all the stakeholders in that area that contribute to that water body. And you identify the sources, whether it's OSTDSs, whether it's wastewater, point source pollution, industrial point source pollution, agricultural atmospheric deposition, stormwater runoff. You identify the sources. You assign a value to how much those sources are polluting the water. And then you identify a series of projects to mitigate for that pollution and bring it down to an acceptable level. Then you start that process again. You monitor, and you make sure that that process is working. So at the state level, we also have the St. John's River Water Management District. They primarily regulate water supply through the consumptive use permit. So they control how much utilities can pump out of the ground. They also focus on flood protection and water quality as far as stormwater regulations related to development. And they also permit... They're another agency like the Army Corps that permits wetlands as well. So in the local government, we still have a role in protecting our water, our water resources. We can do that through, as mentioned by multiple speakers before, through land development regulations, through environmental ordinances, through our comprehensive plan, and then obviously, through water and wastewater projects, but also operations. I want to highlight, you know, operations are a major component of reducing the amount of nutrient loading that goes into our water bodies, whether it's the advanced treatment that we do at our wastewater plants or it's our best management practices that we do for stormwater maintenance, whether it's street sweeping, cleaning out the system, removing that nutrient-laden material that exists in curbs and gutters and also in the pipes. So we can catch a lot of that material through operations, catch a lot of those nutrients through operations. It reduces our loading and reduces our need for large-scale capital projects. So next up, we're going to talk a little bit about, specifically about the water bodies in Volusia County that are impaired and that staff has been focusing on to try to get to that restoration level. So this slide represents an overall list. I'm going to go into each of these individually. But this is an overall list of water bodies that either have a TMDL established, or BMAP, or in the case of the Mosquito Lagoon, a Reasonable Assurance Plan. So first up is the Indian River and the Mosquito Lagoon. And we group these together because the Indian River Lagoon now basically extends from Ormond Beach all the way down to Jupiter. Now, as far as Volusia County having an impact on this, there's multiple areas. There's the Mosquito Lagoon, the Banana River, and the Indian River. Volusia County has allocations for load reductions in the Mosquito Lagoon, as well as the northern portion of the IRL. The northern portion of the IRL basically extends from this extreme southern portion of Volusia County down to Melbourne. We have a very small allocation. The southeast portion of Volusia County is very undeveloped. We have very little impact in terms of urbanization down there. So our allocation for the load reduction, as far as the northern IRL BMAP is concerned, is really covered by our utilities projects involving the southeast regional wastewater treatment facility. The Mosquito Lagoon, however, is a very important water body to Volusia County. And it's something that Volusia County has a tremendous impact on. We knew that, before the TMDL process was about to begin, we knew that that particular water body, approximately five or six years ago, would be declared impaired. And instead of waiting on the state to come in and say, "That water body's impaired. We're going to do a TMDL, and then we're going to do a BMAP." And that's a 10- to 15-year process. Volusia County Government, along with local stakeholders, such as the City of Edgewater, the City of New Smyrna Beach, the City of Oak Hill, and the DOT, got together, and they went a different route. They established the Reasonable Assurance Plan, which cuts that impairment to TMDL to BMAP process. It cuts it by a factor of three at a minimum. So we went from what might be a 15-year process to being able to start construction projects that would reduce the nutrient loading to really about a five-year process, where we are actively underway with multiple projects, not just in Volusia County, but also other local stakeholders, such as New Smyrna, Edgewater, and Oak Hill, to reduce those nutrient loadings. It's a massive shortcut, and it's something that is going to jumpstart that process to reduce those pollutant loadings in the Mosquito Lagoon and hopefully get that restoration, get to those restoration goals a lot sooner. Up next, we've got the Halifax River, which is also now a part of the IRL. This particular water body has just a TMDL established that called for a 9% reduction of stormwater. This TMDL was adopted in 2013. However, the state has not followed through and created a Basin Management Action Plan. That does not mean that we're not doing anything. We are actively doing multiple projects that involve the Halifax River. In fact, right after the TMDL was established, we started doing some projects, knowing that we had to start reducing those pollutant loads into this water body. In 2021, we had one of our consultants do an assessment. Well, let me back up a little bit. Immediately after the establishment of the TMDL, we had a consultant go out and do what we call an outfall assessment. They went out and identified every single pipe that is a Volusia County asset that discharges into the Halifax River. And based on that, we developed a series of projects to address and reduce the pollutant loadings from those particular outfall pipes. We followed that plan, and in 2021, we had the same consultant come out and do an analysis of all the projects that we've completed. And we've actually hit an estimated 22% reduction in overall total nitrogen, which is significantly higher than what was called for. Now, remember, that 9% reduction is from stormwater in general. So that affects what the cities do, and it's 9% of the overall stormwater. We've reduced 22% of the loading from our stormwater. So that's something that we're working on. Eventually, the state will get to the BMAP process on the Halifax River. They will look at all those projects that we have done. There's a decent chance they'll look at what we've done and say, "We've met our allocation," and that there are other stakeholders that might have to contribute and do some projects as well. That doesn't mean that we're going to stop. We're still going to follow that plan. And we're going to identify all those outfalls where we can do something to reduce the loading, because it just doesn't make sense to stop once you hit your number. You want to keep going and reduce that loading as much as possible. Up next, we've got the St. John's River. This is officially called the Middle St. John's, Lake Harney, Lake Monroe Basin Management Action Plan. This is a TMDL/BMAP process. This is one of the early ones. The TMDL was adopted in 2009, and the BMAP was adopted in 2012. Volusia County was allocated load reductions. Similar kind of situation to what we did with Halifax. We went out and we identified every stormwater pipe that discharges into this portion of the St. John's River, and we initiated a series of projects to reduce that loading. And we're in the second five-year cycle. We met our load reductions for the first five-year cycle, and we're on track to meet for the second. At the last look-in, which I believe was a couple of years ago, the latest annual update, for the total BMAP, 89% of the required load reductions have been met, and this is all the partners, and 107% of the load reductions for phosphorus have been. So this is one of the early BMAPs that have been initiated, and you can see the progress that has been made over almost 10 years, where we're almost at that desired load reduction. Now, that doesn't mean you stop, because what the process is, they say, okay, you've reduced the loading. Let's go out and test and see what the actual amount of pollutants in that water is. And do we have to tweak the program? Do we need more load reductions to get that water body to where it needs to be? But that's one that's been relatively successful. Volusia County has completed six projects that affect that particular BMAP. I'd like to point out that Seminole County has completed five, and the City of Sanford has completed five. So we're a little ahead of those folks over there. But they did have some larger load reductions. One of the primary drivers in St. John's in this particular BMAP was the City of Sanford had a significant discharge from their wastewater plant into the river, which they addressed. And so, moving forward, I'm going to kind of group these together. We've got Tamoka and Spruce Creek. The Tamoka River TMDL was established in May of 2013. It was impaired for nutrients, phosphorus, and nitrogen. We actually received some correspondence from some citizens asking about this and the Spruce Creek in particular, and really, you know, reaching out and saying, "Why hasn't the state moved forward with a BMAP?" So we reached out to the state and talked to them a little bit about the Tamoka River one, as well as the Spruce Creek. And it turns out that they went back and looked at it. They went back and looked at the recent data. And these original TMDLs were established based on chlorophyll and dissolved oxygen, not based on the actual concentrations of nitrogen and phosphorus in the water. There's a little interpretation there. So they went back, looked at the current standards, and they've actually responded back and said that they're going to move the Tamoka River and the Spruce Creek into what they call a 2-T designation at the next cycle, which means the TMDL is complete and attaining water quality standards. So that's a good sign. You know, that means that they're not going to... It's not like they're going to stop monitoring it. They're going to continue to test that water. And if it does pass those thresholds again, then we're going to have to take a look at that and do that. But that's good news on these two particular water bodies, because it means that they're currently hitting the standards set forth by the state for not being impaired. I will say, particularly on Spruce Creek, there's two sections. There's a saltwater segment and a freshwater segment. The saltwater segment is the one that was impaired for nutrients. The freshwater segment was impaired for fecal coliform. They went out and looked to see if there was any agricultural discharges or anything that would cause that, as well as any wastewater plant. They really couldn't find anything. It's really kind of naturally occurring. I can't go out and put diapers on all the little critters out there. So we're going to continue to monitor that one. But that's one that isn't going away, but that's one that really, it's tough to get an impact on and to look at. I'm going to pass this over to Mike, and Mike's going to talk about our springs, because this has a lot to do with our utilities folks. And he's going to talk about our three outstanding Florida springs.
Thank you, Ben.
Counsel, have any questions for Ben first?
Okay, very, very good. Good morning, House Members. Mike Ulrich, Water Resources and Utilities Director. Just as Ben has just provided his status on surface waters, the next few slides are going to essentially go provide you an overview of our most noted springs in our county. According to the Florida Springs Institute, our state has over 1,000 Artesian springs throughout the entire state, which is pretty amazing. In Volusia County, we have three which are under special protections, governed by state law under the Florida Springs and Aquifer Protection Act of 2016. They're summarized on the chart. They're summarized on the chart that you see before you right now, and as you can see, they're all impaired for nitrates. The TMDL for Blue Spring, or I'll refer to as Volusia Blue, because interestingly, for anyone that was interested to know this, there are seven Blue Springs that actually exist throughout the state, four of which are in the Outstanding Florida Springs Act. So when we talk at the state level, we commonly talk about Volusia Blue. So in this case, Volusia Blue with the TMDL adopted in 2014. It's the first magnitude spring, and as everyone knows, it's a warm water refuge for manatee. Gemini Springs with its TMDL adopted in 2017, and a BMAP in 2018 is a second magnitude. Again, in this situation with Gemini, it was closed for swimming since 2000 due to high bacteria in that area, as well as the nutrients that from phosphorus and nitrogen that exists today. Ilion Springs, again, also a warm water refuge for manatee as well. It's also a second magnitude spring. And each one of these does have some unique characteristics. So this map of DEPs, from what DEP's website provides, an overview of the 30 outstanding Florida Springs located within nine counties of this state. Twenty-four have been declared nutrient impaired, so we're not alone in this. There are counties dealing with this all over, and we can all learn from each other, and that's what we've been attempting to do through this process. None of the provisions of this act, the following key elements are mandated. Water quality target that must be achieved within 20 years of the BMAP adoption. Delineation of a priority focus area. All local governments that must have fertilizer ordinances in place, and then OSTDS remediation, or as Mr. Mills had identified earlier, it's your septic tanks, but they go primarily known by OSTDS, which is On-Site Stewage Treatment Disposal Systems. Zooming in just a little bit more, I just want to point out a couple of distinctions for our three springs here. The blue area essentially identifies the entire spring shed within that spring. The green area identifies what's referred to as the Priority Focus Area, or PFA. It's distinct in that this is where a lot of the emphasis is for consideration of remediation for the nutrients and the problems that we have right now. The DEP identifies a PFA that represents the area in which the basin where the aquifer is most vulnerable to inputs, and where there's the most connections between groundwater and the spring. And that's why the emphasis is there. And from top to bottom, you can see Ilion Springs, then in the middle, you can see Blue Spring, and then at the bottom, Gemini Springs. I want to let you know that we'll be having a lot of discussion on springs throughout this entire process. I just wanted to get you aware of what the priority focus area is for each of these springs. To summarize, and using the same format that Ben had just previously described, these are the key elements of Volusia Blue. First magnitude spring, as I mentioned, the manatees, the winter refuge for our manatees, 100-plus square miles, if you will, of the spring shed, and becoming increasingly urbanized as we've seen. The water quality is identified as elevated nutrients, leading to algae growth. And while the TMDL was adopted in 2014, and the BMAP was adopted in 2018 under challenges and that, it really didn't come into effect until about 2020, and that's why we're a little bit behind on some of the things, although we've worked on some of our utility-related strategies. Other types of remediation have still been pending until we can get some more guidance and see where DEP was going. Pollution sources, each one of these springs, as you'll see later, each have, the DEP again has identified specific contributors to each of these springs and how they do, and there is a distinction between each of these springs. There is no cookie cutter approach when it comes to trying to solve each of these issues. They have to be examined, looked at, and we have to have unique strategies for each of these very unique springs. Gemini Springs, a magnitude spring, two spring, I'm sorry, two primary events. It was purchased by Volusia County. It's a county park area. Again, urbanized area over the years, which has contributed to the nitrates in the area. Again, as far as pollution sources, OSTDS at 41%, fertilizer 50%, very significant in this. Wastewater treatment plants, we do not have any existing wastewater treatment plants in that area, so I suspect that more of that's probably reclaimed related at the time in which this occurred. And Ilion Springs, another second magnitude spring as well. As mentioned, it shares similar characteristics yet different. The refuge for manatee exists in Ilion Springs. The pollutant sources here, you'll note, is fertilizer, and OSTDS in this case is by DEP, assessed as at 14% throughout the entire spring. However, within the priority focus area, they've identified it as 20%, which in fact triggers a certain remediation strategy for this spring, as well as it pertains to OSTDS. I'll turn it back over to Ginger at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is that loud enough? So I am going to go through a history and a timeline of our water quality efforts in Volusia and some new initiatives as well. So Volusia County has had a commitment to water quality since its inception. Our Home Rule Charter was approved by voters in 1970, and the charter established that the county can adopt environmental standards for environmental protection, so minimum standards that apply countywide, and that has paved the way for our protection of natural resources since the inception of the county. So Ben explained the regulatory framework, and he talked about then sort of nested approach where there's federal and state and local ability to regulate and implement protections. And so I'm going to focus on the local level. And so at the local level, there's really what I consider sort of four buckets of things that we can do, four different methods that local governments can do. And so these are those four. So planning and regulation to reduce impacts, and we'll talk about all of these in more detail. We can implement projects that restore previous impacts, and that's a lot of what we do, is restoring things that have happened, you know, water quality degradation from things that we've done in the past, right? And then we can acquire property to preserve resources. And then one of our big roles is monitoring and education of our citizens. And so we'll be a little bit more specific on each of these as we go along. So in each of those buckets or those methods, here's briefly what we're doing. And I'm not going to read all of these, because we're really going to talk through most of them, but we do have planning and regulation, right? We have standards, we have our environmental minimum standards, we have our comprehensive plan, which guides all of the things that we do in the county. And we implement state rules, we'll talk about that. We'll talk a lot today about the projects that we implement, including the Water Quality Plan and some of the others, and water conservation, which we're really not going to talk a whole lot about today, but that's on this list, right? Because it's one of the things that we do fairly robustly here in Volusia. We're not going to talk anymore about land acquisition, other than to say, you know, we have acquired about 40,000 acres of property in this county and preserved that in perpetuity. And of course, in 2020, we reauthorized Volusia forever, so hopefully we'll have a lot more acres to add to that total. And then the fourth thing really is that data collection, and we'll go over what we do in the county for surface water quality monitoring and some of the education programs that we do. So to start at the planning and regulation side, so again, we have our comprehensive plan. The comp plans are required by the state, right? The state has this local government comprehensive planning and land development regulation rule. So we all have to have comprehensive plans, and that really is the framework that guides how we control development and how we, as a county, implement our vision for the future. And so when we have land development regulations, they have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. So oftentimes, when we're looking at any kind of new regulation or emerging issue, the comp plan is the place to start, right? We set those policies and goals in the comp plan, and we have that trickle down through our regulatory documents. We also are fairly unique in that we have minimum standards for environmental protection, and we have county-wide environmental ordinances. So here is a list of some of those minimum standards that apply to water quality in particular. There are more than are listed here. So we have a minimum standard for wetlands. And I want to say too that in prepping for the workshop on April 12th, have a bit of a more discussion about how the minimum standards work, the different ways that they get implemented in the county, who sometimes cities adopt, sometimes cities don't adopt, right? There are some nuances there, and we'll talk a lot about that, I think, in April, but for the time being, this is just sort of an introduction to the fact that we have these, and they do apply countywide in some way. So wetlands, stormwater, we have a potable water wellfield protection standard, which regulates what types of things can happen in wellfield areas to protect that potable water source. We have our water conservation and our water-wise landscaping standards. Of course, we have a fertilizer ordinance that applies countywide in cooperation with the cities. And then we have a pollution control minimum standard, and that's a sort of broad standard that says, basically, you can't pollute the county's land and waters, and there's some interesting language in that minimum standard. So then we go from the county-wide minimum standards to how we implement those standards in the county. So the way the county implements minimum standards is through our Land Development Code. So this slide just talks a little bit about the Land Development Code regulations that apply in the unincorporated part of Volusia County. So of course, we have wetland protection standards. Our wetland protection standards say very clearly that we have no net loss of wetland function or acreage. So the way you accommodate that, the way you get to no net loss, is we require avoidance and minimization of impacts. So if someone comes to us with a proposal and there are wetland impacts, the staff works with that person, that developer, that homeowner, whatever, to reduce those impacts to the extent possible. And if there are unavoidable impacts, then those have to be mitigated, and that gets you to no net loss. We also have established wetland buffers, 25-foot minimum buffer in most of the county, 50-foot wetland buffer in areas that are considered NORMA, Natural Resource Management Area, or ECO, Environmental Core Overlay. And we require mitigation for impacts to those buffers. So again, we try to avoid and minimize impacts to the buffer. If there are unavoidable impacts to the buffer, there is mitigation required for those impacts. Another one of our Land Development Code standards that impacts water quality is the Indian River Lagoon Overlay District. And so that is an area of the county that is bounded by the southern border of New Smyrna Beach down to the county line, and then west to US 1. And in that area, we require that 30% of properties maintain native vegetation, right? So at least 30% of the site remains uncleared. We also require stormwater capture on each lot, which is different than how that's handled in the rest of the county. And there are some regulations about when OSTDS are permitted or what type. So in some cases, depending on how close you are to the Mosquito Lagoon, you have to have the nutrient-reducing septic system. And then we have stormwater requirements in our Land Development Code, and that really regulates sort of the quality and quantity and how folks have to deal with stormwater on their sites. And then, of course, in addition to our own rules, we are charged with implementing state and federal mandates, and so I have some examples of that. And this happens a lot, and some of this Ben touched on, you know, we are required to implement these state requirements, and in some cases, that they can be quite lengthy. So here is a specific example. We'll talk about the Blue Spring Basin Management Action Plan. So along the left-hand side of the slide, you can see, these are all of the requirements that came out of that BMAP in 2018. And then along the right side is who is the responsible party for each of those requirements. And so what you can see, I highlighted the things that Volusia County is required to do based on that BMAP, the green text on the slide. And so a number of these requirements are things that Volusia County and the other local governments have to do. I will say, for Blue Spring, we have or are doing all of the things that we are required to do, or either have completed them or in the process of those, so that's a good thing. But every time there's a new BMAP or other state law, you know, then your staff is really on top of that. We're engaged in the process, and then when those are adopted, then we're working on the projects that need to happen, and we're bringing that information to you. So every time there's a new BMAP, there are new things for us to do. Okay, so now we're going to move on to that sort of second bucket, the idea that we have the ability to implement projects to improve water quality. And we're going to talk mostly about our water quality plan that was adopted in 2015. It certainly was not the beginning of our emphasis on water quality in the county, but it was a big, it was a big deal, right? I don't know who, anybody, there aren't a lot of people in the room that were there, I'll say that. It was a big fat deal. And so we had this workshop in 2014. It was at the Ocean Center. We invited all of the stakeholders, all of the state regulatory agencies, all of the municipalities. We invited all of the community groups that were engaged in water quality, and we had this day-long workshop, where we all talked about the things we were doing, and talked about the things we wish we were doing, or where we should go from here. And so the result of that, for the county, was our 2015 Water Quality Plan. And the plan had six goals, and they're shown here on the screen. We'll talk about each of those goals as we go along, and we'll outline what action steps. So for each goal, there were multiple action steps. We'll tell you what those were, and the status, you know, what we've completed, you know, where we're going. In 2017, council actually adopted an update to that 2015 plan. So there was a matrix, and that's in your packet of supplemental materials. There was an original matrix of all the goals and action steps. We updated that officially in 2017, added some action steps at that time. And I want to say too that we continually are working this plan, monitoring the plan. A lot of things came up after the 2015 plan. For instance, this Aquifer Protection Act was in 2016, right? We didn't envision that in 2015 when we set the plan out. So it's an evolving document, and staff is always making sure that we're on top of anything that's emerging. And it hasn't been a one-time effort, right? It was very much a collaborative document with all the stakeholders that I talked about, and we regularly engage with those stakeholders even still. So some of that is with the government agencies, but a lot of what we've done in the plan and in subsequent implementation is in cooperation with our community partners. So I'm going to name a bunch of groups that were involved back then and continue to be involved, just so you can understand sort of the breadth of the community involvement that happened and still happens. So some of the organizations, and this may not be comprehensive. Stetson University's Institute for Water and Environmental Resilience. Bethune-Cookman University has been a big partner. The Marine Discovery Center was a very big partner in the beginning, and they continue to be involved. The Blue Spring Alliance, Gemini Springs Alliance, the Riverside Conservancy, which, if you don't know the story behind Riverside, it's a really interesting story. It came about because we had these academies, these education academies, where we brought information to the public and brought people together, and then out of that, some of the students created their own nonprofit and are doing amazing work in this county. The Save the Manatee Club has, was, and has, still remain involved. Volusia Water Alliance, the League of Women Voters, the Environmental Council of Volusia Flagler, the Marine Resources Council, St. John's Riverkeeper, and also VCard has been really involved in some of the projects that we've been doing. So I just wanted to let you know that this is a really big effort. Oh, and that's it. It's Ben now.
Can I stop you first? I should have stopped you the first time you talked. Because now I'm behind. Ginger, you talked about wetland protection, and I just have a, I have a question for your, really for your opinion, with the knowledge you have collected over the years. You said that our wetland protection is for no net loss of function or acreage, and what concerns me that when I see things- And what concerns me that when I see things that come before the council for rezoning or a comp plan change, and oftentimes we'll see a development with a wetland in it, and we preserve the part of the wetland that's wet and build all around it. That wet spot got there because of, well, you showed the slide of DeLeon Springs and Gemini Springs, the basins, all of the runoff, the seepage that gets there. It's the same thing for any wetland, wouldn't it be?
Well, so there are, obviously, there are different types of wetlands. We have isolated wetlands that are primarily groundwater-fed and maybe they're ephemeral, they come and go with the groundwater level change. There's a great example of that at Laonia Preserve. There are also wetlands that are more associated with surface water bodies or they're sort of flowways where they're lower elevation and they connect, you know, maybe one wetland or one low area to another. So it's hard to generalize about that. You know, part of trying not to isolate wetlands through developments is trying to protect those buffers for sure. Because I think what you're saying is, you know, all right, so you have a development and there's a little wetland in the middle and what's the real value of that wetland, you know, now as it's isolated from all of its neighbors? And we certainly try not to, try not to have situations like that, but what the ordinance requires is the protection of the wetland and the buffer. And so to the extent possible, we try to maintain connections.
Yeah, I guess my concern was not so much for the small wetland in the middle. We have those, but larger ones, and a lot of times we see development around large wetlands. And I'm just, I'm wondering how, if we need to create new requirements for the way that we protect that wetland, or can we, can we build right up to it and it still is a functioning wetland? What, you know, what happens with all the impervious paving and roads around it and all the runoff that goes into the wetlands? It's all going to carry more nutrients, more chemicals. And so what we do is mitigate, and I'm really not sure how you, once you destroy a wetland or build right up to the edge, how you can mitigate that. So what we do is we go somewhere else and mitigate where there's not a problem. It seems, I hate to sound crass, but it sounds like a Ponzi scheme to me, where we're stealing from one place and putting it somewhere else.
Initially, in the sort of wetland regulation environment, the goal was always to have mitigation be onsite. So oftentimes, early on, so let's say the 80s and the early 90s, mitigation typically took the form of onsite mitigation, either restoration of the wetland onsite or some other sort of mitigation. What actually happened over time was that, so then those mitigation areas are managed by a homeowners association or an individual. And what we have found over time is that those typically fail. It's hard to do small-scale wetland restoration or wetland creation. You really have to get the water right, you really have to get the, at least the initial maintenance right. And so over time, the status of the science is such that these larger-scale mitigation banks are actually more successful. And you're 100% right, they're not in the same area, although they are in the same basin. And they actually end up being more effective as wetlands because at a larger scale, it's much easier to get the water right. It's much easier to get, say, the fire regime or whatever, right? And so almost all regulatory agencies have moved to this idea of larger-scale mitigation banks instead of onsite mitigation because the failure rate was exceedingly high. And the way that that's regulated, the way that you know how much mitigation you need is the state has what's called a uniform mitigation and assessment method. So you look at the wetland that you have now and there's a very extensive list of how you grade the quality of that wetland based on how it is right now, you know, are there any exotics, a whole bunch of criteria. And then you do that same analysis for the wetland after development. And so whatever the change is, that delta is what you have to mitigate for. And so that's then what you have to potentially go offsite and buy mitigation bank credits or whatever, you know, the choices of that particular developer. And it appears as if that is actually more effective in saving welland function, but it is not right there on that subdivision or that neighborhood or whatever.
Okay, I'll come back to that in a second. Vice Chair Gerber?
Chair, and thank you staff for great presentations thus far. It's really great to see it under a full umbrella of what the county efforts have been thus far, so I think that's great. Two things, I wonder, the list of partners, I know it's listed here, can we have that information?
Of course.
Right? And I wonder, I know you're going to make recommendations later on, so I wonder the questions that the chair has, is that part of recommendations for changes?
So what we have at the end is maybe some ideas for additional goals for the water quality plan. I think what Chair Brower was talking about, maybe more about what we've talked about having that conversation in April about changes to the land development code.
Okay.
They're all blended together, right, in ways that it's hard to tease apart. But certainly, I had anticipated at that discussion, talking in more depth about all of our environmental standards and, you know, any past efforts or ideas, you know, through smart growth committees, et cetera, to make changes to those. So I don't know how you want to tease it out, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You asked a question I was going to come back to her for, but would you quickly look back at 32, 132? At the bottom, it says limitations on nutrients and wastewater affluent, limitations on the volume of, are those limitations codified? Are they suggestions? Is it from the DEP? Is it from the county?
Are we on the right one?
No. 0132, it's, there's a, right there.
Ah, okay. Right, so these are examples of state and federal rules that we have to implement or that affect us, right? So limitations on the volume of water permitted to be withdrawn, that's through the consumptive use permit process through the water management district. And that does impact what Mike and the other utility providers do to provide safe drinking water to folks. Is that what your question was?
Yes, thank you. Ben, real, just a couple of real quick things. You mentioned the 22%, I think it was, reduction in nitrogen. Is that, are you talking about in stormwater?
Correct. All the efforts in the Halifax River have been focused on stormwater. The TMDL did address some issues with OSTDS. I believe the number is right around 8,000 pounds as they looked at contribution from septic tanks. They had a, in your documents that were provided, there was a link to all the TMDLs and BMAPs. If you go and look at the Halifax one, there's a good report, it shows a map showing where all the septic tanks are. Long story short, that area is not in Volusia County's service area for utilities, it's actually a norman. So the primary focus in nitrogen removal, it was called for 9% in removal in stormwater, which we've achieved out of our total 22%.
Yeah, I'm really pleased with what we're doing with stormwater. Almost every piece of research I look at, stormwater comes up as a number-one or number-two source of pollution. And we are, we are really going after that and I think that's good. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one little question. This is minor, but I'm just trying to get the mindset on page 131. Indian River Lagoon overlay district, it says requires 30%. And I'm just using this one as an example of the property to contain not lot native vegetation. What, where do we come up with the 30%? Where do we come up with these percentages?
Okay, so I'm going to preface that by saying that was adopted before I was here.
Yeah.
But.
By who?
By the county council.
Okay, I just, yeah.
But the idea behind a portion of the property remaining in native vegetation, in much of the county, the tree ordinance says on commercial development, you'll retain 15% of the site, right? So in this area though, because that's a Class II shellfish harvesting waters, there was a recognition that it needed a higher level of protection. And the idea behind the 30% was to have enough native vegetation or non-developed area on the lot to help to filter some of the pollutants and not create additional pervious surfaces. So I, you know, I don't know that there's some magic behind 30%, but that was at the time, the number that was believed to be what would be helpful in protecting those shellfish harvesting waters.
Mike, you mentioned Blue Springs pollution sources, septic at 54%, 41% at Gemini. I'm thinking, Blue Springs, I didn't see anything on stormwater. Do we, do we know what the number is there?
Yeah, go ahead. It's, the part of the reason Mike deals with a lot of the springs is because they're primarily utilities-related. You know, stormwater in surface waters, common sense, right? Stormwater flows over land, picks up nutrients, goes right in the water. Stormwater in the spring basins is a little more difficult to quantify. You do have, you know, nutrients that are created, put into stormwater ponds, and then those ponds percolate into the ground. There are nutrients in there. It's kind of like a more bang for the buck, like you were saying, on the surface waters, how big of an impact stormwater has. It has a tremendous impact on the surface waters. And you can get more bang for your buck in reducing those nutrient loadings by addressing stormwater. Septic convert, you know, dealing with septic tanks is very expensive. In the springs, the, all the BMAPs and everything, what the focus and what the determination has been is that the overwhelming pollutant loading comes from OSTDSs for the most part, and fertilizer.
Because they're groundwater-fed, right? There are no surface inputs. The water quality at the spring is the water that's coming out of the ground. So it's what happened in the spring shed, as opposed to in a river, you know, what happened, the water quality here is based on what things came in, in the surface. So because they're entirely groundwater-fed, there's no, there haven't been surface water or stormwater allocations at all in the spring BMAPs.
How do you quantify any of those? At DeLeon Springs, you said it's 71% fertilizer. There's, and, so how do you quantify that, septic at 54, stormwater at some other number?
So a lot of it's done based on land use. They're looking at the overall land use of the, of the spring shed. And in DeLeon, for instance, there's not a lot of urbanization. I mean, even from a septic tank system, it's pretty rural out there. The largest, you know, the largest land use out there is AC, and that's probably where the fertilizer comes into place. So it's a combination of they look at land use, they look at the number of septic tanks, they look at, you know, point sources, they look at all these different things when they're looking at a BMAP or TMDL. They're trying to determine what is the source of the loading. And that's, as Mike alluded to, every water body is different, you know? Even when they did the Mosquito Lagoon, they split it up into three sections. The southern section, there's nothing going on, you know, down there. It's all preserved, you know, land. The biggest contributor there is the influx of water through the Holloway Canal from the northern part of the IRL. So, you know, every single water body is different. And so they're looking at a multitude of factors and that's how they come up with the science to determine the sources of the loading.
Yeah, the DEP conducts what they call nitrogen source, nitrogen source loading input tool, NSLT. I think that's all right. And in those links that we gave for the BMAPs, in each of the spring BMAPs included in appendix is that NSLT. And that is basically where they took the, all of the data they had, where each septic tank is, what is the land use, where are their farms, where are their sports fields? And they have averages that they provide. So if you're a golf course, they have an average amount of nitrogen that is applied to a golf course. And they use all of those inputs, as much information as they have, and they throw that into their model and then that's how they come out with the allocations.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to understand all this. One of the, you provided tremendous information in this. It, it kept me up late. One of the things that I came across as a pollutant source was base flow, which is basically, as I understand it, seepage from groundwater that will come up.
Basically, stormwater runoff is the water that's moving into a water body when it rains. Base flow is the water that's moving through that ditch or canal when it's not raining. So yes, it, there's a groundwater component to it. And, you know, particularly on the east side around the Mosquito Lagoon, we have a lot of open channel canals that were dug years ago for mosquito control or whatever, but when it's not raining, there's still flow. And that is generally attributed to groundwater getting into those canals and then flowing into the.
Here's why, why that was interesting to me. And maybe I'm wrong, but it seems to me that if there's base flow, if seepage is a pollution source, does that indicate that it's much more widespread, that it's, it's in the aquifer and it's coming up everywhere, it's coming up in springs?
So that's a, that's a great question. And I don't know that anybody has the complete answer, but base flow is probably that water that's in this shallow groundwater, right? So it's not aquifer water that's coming up and flowing out. It's that shallow, sort of interstitial, in the soil groundwater that flows in the direction, you know, based on topography. So it is not typically aquifer water that's coming out, not what we would consider groundwater from the drinking water perspective.
How does the water then in Alexander Springs? You talk about rural, it's more rural than DeLeon Springs is. And it's measuring high nitrogen there. There's no farms around it. It's rural. So it's, it's got to be in the aquifer. If it's pumping out millions of gallons a day in these springs.
Yes, if you're talking about a nitrate level in a spring, it is definitely aquifer water, groundwater. How the pollutants are getting there, you know, they're starting to find that, we think of the surface as uniform and water percolates down in some uniform way and that's not the case in Florida, right? It's a very karst topography. There are a lot of fissures and different, like, direct conduits to the aquifer that we don't necessarily know about. That's not all mapped. So it could be, I don't know the BMAP for Alexander, so I can't speculate on what the sources are, but they are finding in a number of cases that nutrients that are coming from a great distance because of these conduits, right? And so maybe there's a farm over here or probably, you know, they're likely on septic systems out in a rural area like that. And so I don't, I think the state of the science is emerging too in that we don't necessarily know. And some of this water is, that's the other thing, is the water that's coming up from the spring isn't the water that fell as rain last week. It's often years and years, decades old. In the case of Blue Spring, we have a mix of really old water and more rainwater. You can see the spring output change with rain, so we know there's some recent component, but a lot of that water is also old. So some of what we see coming out is from something that happened decades ago. And in some ways, that's a little bit disheartening when we're looking at all the things we're doing in the spring shed and we're still seeing nitrates going up. You're like, oh, you don't get that immediate gratification of, look what we did and it's getting better because the water is coming from when we were doing bad things 50 years ago.
It's also, I think that, you know, I hear it said all the time, it's not just my water, it's all of our water. And, you know, we, we're making tremendous project, progress with stormwater and yet in the Indian River Lagoon, you know, we see the amount of manatees that are dying, seagrass is gone. We're getting pollution up from Brevard County and the St. Johns, we're getting pollution from Homestead. It all, it all comes north. So we have to continue to work on this, but it's got to be, it's got to be broader, it's got to be statewide. So to that, to that... So to that, to that point, two final quick questions is pollution reduction by the DEP. They give standards of how, how much nitrogen and phosphorus can be in, in, uh, treated water before it goes into a body of water. Do they need to be reduced? Because it looks like what's happened, even though everybody's complying with the law, in the, at least in the Halifax River part of the Indian River Lagoon that doesn't flush very well, it, it just, it keeps rising. We're putting in the allowable limit by law, but nitrogen and phosphorus keeps getting worse and worse. Do we, do we need to just stop it? Or does the DEP need to reduce it?
Well, I think that's part of the, the process, right? In that, that graph I showed, the circular graph. So to, to be clear on the Halifax, we've surpassed what, what we, what they asked us to do on our storm water. There are other stakeholders, and without, absent a BMAP, we don't know where they're at and what states they're at. However, part, part of that restoration process is, you know, they, they, they go in, they, they do the TMDL, and they do the BMAP, and they look at all the loading, and they look at the, the actual concentrations of the water, and they, and they do a lot of science, and they basically come out and they say, okay, you know, let's reduce the loading. That's the amount of nutrients that is going into that water body. Let's reduce that by some percentage, you know? And then, let's measure, let's, let's achieve the, I mean, this is not a, a one, two-year, three-year process. Just like what I was talking about with the St. Johns, you're looking at a ten, we're in almost a year ten of that BMAP. So it's, do these projects, reduce that loading, measure, you know, monitor what, what, what our folks do in environmental, and see what results we're getting. And if we're not getting the desired result, then yeah, they're going to come back and say, hey, we need to look at this, we need to look at this, we need to reduce loading even for.
But not just us?
No, it's all the stakeholders. No, that, that's one key, and we'll talk about it a, a little bit as we move forward. But this isn't just a Volusia County problem. It's not just our problem to solve. You know, you look at the IRL, I mean, how many different counties does that impact? The St. John's River goes from Brevard to Jacksonville, you know? And, and, you know, these spring sheds don't just, they, they don't, water body and watersheds don't stop it at municipal boundaries. So, you know, if, if you see these collaborative, a lot of these are collaborative process, the, the reasonable assurance plan. I mean, that, you know, we brought in, you know, our partner cities down there, and, and everybody's contributing, and that's what it takes. It, it's not just one entity that's going to solve all the problems.
Right. Last question, probably for, for Mike. But when you were talking, you mentioned old history on the Halifax where we used to dump all kinds of stuff in there. We don't do that now. Every company just can't put all their waste in it. However, we have several hundred deep well injection sites where we're injecting insecticides, industrial chemicals. The city of Stewart has had to go into reverse osmosis to provide water for their citizens because the water quality is so bad in South Florida. And then after they did it, they discovered that reverse osmosis produces a lot of wastewater. So now they're injecting that underground. Where, do you have any idea where, is it going into the deep aquifer? Is it going into sand? Is it, where are we, because my fear is that if we're pumping it underground, we're going to drink it someday. And, and this is not Volusia County's fault, but it affects Volusia County.
Well, you're, you're absolutely right, and, and it'd be difficult for me to, because I'm not as close to that, that situation. It'd be some, again, from, uh, from the state's side to be able to answer some of those questions, I'm sure they'd be helpful. We, as a practice, in, in our county, we don't have that type of situation. We also don't discharge to the river. We recycle our water, we get it back out into the system to offset, especially over in the springs area where we're, we're trying to get, you know, develop that irrigation reclaimed and reuse to offset the, the demand for groundwater, you know, to water lawns and things like that. So recycling is, is very, very critical, not only in, in irrigating lawns, but also in working with power companies and things like that too, to get them out from, from using groundwater for, for their processes. And we've, we've also, you know, helped address some of those issues with the Water Management District and, and some of the power companies. So, so it's a never-ending process. We don't do some of the practices that, that do exist in other parts of the state, fortunately. But with that said, and we can't emphasize it enough, you know, we, there are problems, they're, they're unique to different places. We are finding problems, problems are being assessed in the billions, unfortunately. The only amount of money that's being made is in the millions. And so there's, there's a lot, there's still a large gap. And, but if we can get everybody to think more about water in all of our conversations, it's, you know, it's just a key. It's key to our, you know, future prosperity and everything else that we, you know, that we value in this state.
Well, thank you. Maybe I'll pick on Dr. Jones when he comes up. He's not with DEP, but he might, he might have, he's shaking his head no. And deep order, it's, uh, deep order injection, or deep well injection sites are problematic. Okay, I don't see anybody else. Thank you for bearing with, Danny Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Ben Ginger, how are we compared to other counties when it comes to regulation and what we're doing? Are we on par or are we exceeding? Have we looked at that and done a, a regional comparison or statewide comparison?
For environmental standards, we're, we're, I would say in the, in the top tier of counties in Volusia County. There are some counties that really do very little. They rely on the state or the regional, you know, the Water Management District. And there are some counties that, that go really far. There are some counties specifically on the west coast that have very strict environmental protection standards. And partly that's because they've seen the water quality degradation that comes from not doing that. So I, I think that we're, we're in a pretty good position. That's not to say that there aren't tweaks that we could make that would, you know, maybe make our ordinances better and/or bring them up to current practices. So for instance, our wetland ordinance was written at a time before that uniform mitigation assessment method, right? So, so what our ordinance says and what we do in practice is just a little bit different because the mitigation rules have changed. So, so we're doing okay, but there's always room for improvement, right?
And, and I will say, you know, Volusia's kind of unique in the types of water resources we have. We have three, you know, outstanding Florida springs. We have the Mosquito Lagoon, the Halifax River, Temoc River, Spruce Creek, I mean, and the ocean. And so, you know, I think from a, a role as far as looking to, to do the restoration and clean these water bodies up, I'd be, it'd be hard pressed to find a county that has as, as much resources as we do and is putting in as much effort as we are in, in, in doing that. As far as the reasonable assurance plan goes, I'm aware of really just one. I think it's Tampa, Tampa Bay did a reasonable assurance plan for, for the bay. But, you know, we, we were, we took a leadership role in establishing that for the lagoon.
No, absolutely. And, and you guys are doing an excellent job on, on proactivity. You know, and it comes into question is, is what is the right thing, you know, and trying to find a balance between, you know, our citizens. We see it all across the country with multiple different laws where we could, as Volusia County, in my opinion, we're doing things right, or we could be doing things right. Is it right to enact stricter laws or more regulations for something that, as you guys just talked about, we not, may not be responsible for? You know, we're kind of the caboose on the lagoon and look what we're doing, you know? So, you know, how do we get, like, like the chair said, how do we get more people on board? I think it's going to be the key to, to long-term, really putting a dent and kicking this thing in the rear end in the future. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, on the regional assurance plan, that was with Oak Hill and Edgewater, why, why have we not done that with other, all those cities that are like Daytona that's on the Halifax and?
So unfortunately, once the TMDL is established, we're, we're, state regulations prevent us from doing a reasonable assurance plan. You have to, you have to catch that before the TMDL goes into effect. So we caught it on the, on the lagoon. The TMDL for, I believe, for Halifax was twenty thirteen, if I got my number correct.
So that's another home rule thing that we have taken away?
Well, once they, once they establish the TMDL, that kind of puts that water body into the state's, uh, uh, cycle for, for relying on them. And that doesn't mean, of course, that we're waiting on them to do projects and to reduce our loading, which I, you know, well, like I talked about, that we're.
You're.
Oh, you're up, okay. So moving forward, Ginger kind of went through, and, and this slide shows all the, all the goals. This has kind of been our guidebook for staff as to, you know, council set these goals. And so what we're going to go through is we're going to go through each goal, and we're going to talk about what we have accomplished and how we have met, met those, met those goals in this particular twenty fifteen water quality plan. But before I get to that, the first, the first goal is storm water. But I put this slide up, we had it at the end of the presentation, but I want to put it right here because we're going to talk about projects. Since twenty fourteen, fifteen, we've completed ninety-six million dollars or, or in process of completing ninety-six million dollars worth of projects. The county share of that has been nineteen million dollars. So that means the, the rest of that money has come from other sources. It does include twenty-five million we just allocated from ARPA, which is federal money, uh, direct funded for storm, particularly for, for utilities. But that is roughly a hundred million dollars worth of projects, and about twenty percent of that cost has been borne by the county. The rest, staff has gone out and, and worked to obtain grants and, and, and other funding and leveraged that money into this. So I, I think that's a, a pretty impressive stat that, that, you know, in the, in the last seven years or so that we've done to, to get a lot of these projects funded. Because we all know that funding is, 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 is the big driver here, and it's not always easily come, to come by. So goal one in the water quality plan was to improve storm water treatment. What we've done, and we talked about, you know, I talked about this briefly, but we, we updated basin studies and we looked at those outfalls because you need to know where the, that pollution's coming from in order to develop those projects. This is like step one in, in moving down that pathway. So we, we've completed, and I'm not going to run through all of them, but, you know, we, we've looked at the storm water basins in these particular areas in order, in order to identify the sources of pollution or the, or the locations where that water is flowing into these water bodies in order to identify and develop those projects. And then the next step is the projects themselves. This is a list of, of storm water projects that we've completed since the adoption of the water quality plan. And it's, and except, now, some of these are in, um, all the way up to Lake Beersford, those are complete. Gabordi is under construction, and Aerial, we just had a bid opening for, and you will be seeing that contract come to council here shortly. And so that will be under construction as soon, soon. Gabordi and Aerial both have to do with the Mosquito Lagoon. So the first couple of projects, you know, Gemini Springs, we installed some nutrient-reducing baffle boxes at a, at a, um, a series of storm water outfalls that discharge into the St. John's River. These baffle boxes serve to collect large debris and silt, but they also have a material in them that, uh, through a chemical process removes nitrogen and phosphorus. The Rio Way project, that was actually, um, a neighborhood of about, or a street of about twenty homes that had been repetitively flooded. Using federal mitigation grants, we obtained, we purchased those homes and demolished them and then constructed a regional storm water pond that not only accounts for flooding, but also has a reduction in nutrient loading. And we received a significant amount of grant funding for that. And then also our North Peninsula Storm Water Project, that's tied to the Halifax TMDL, that's where we're going through. You've got a lot of older areas where they would put storm drains along the side of the road, but they, they just basically straight discharged into the river. You know, the land is, is at a premium over there, so we're creative. We're installing exfiltration systems that allow that water to perk and provide some level of treatment before it gets discharged into the river.
Can, can you elaborate on that?
Sure.
On the exfiltration?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm looking at the picture, I think. So it's perking through?
Yeah, it's basically, the storm water would flow into the inlet and just go right out of the river. Now, ideally, you would construct some sort of treatment pond or something like that to allow that water to settle and then allow those nutrients to perk before it was discharged out. You don't have a lot of land on the North Peninsula. All of us have been up there. It's, uh, there's not a lot of space. So what we've done is we've installed perforated exfiltration pipe. What you see is, it's, it's essentially like a large drain field for storm water. And it'll, that percolation does help to remove some of the nutrients from the storm water before it gets discharged into the river.
Am I just looking at, in this picture, gravel underneath the pipe, is it?
It's fifty-seven stone is what, crushed concrete. And there's a filter fabric wrapped around it. And then, uh, next up is our Thornby Park. This is another St. John's River project that contributed to that particular BMAP. We installed an upflow filter at an existing retention pond. So when the water flows out, it flows through this filter media that reduces the nutrient loading. And then we had a outfall pipe that discharged to the river that incorporated some additional storm water that wasn't being treated at all. This baffle box has that same material to reduce nutrient loading. Again, these are the kind of projects we do in areas of the baffle boxes or the exfil. We do it in areas where we're limited by space. You know, we're dealing in areas that are existing, you know, acquiring land, a dig, a retention pond isn't feasible. We can do this and provide a level of treatment that wasn't there to begin with.
What's the maintenance on that material that captures nutrients?
Um, it varies, but what we're, what we, the manufacturer is telling us it's a twenty-year life expectancy for most of this material on these baffle boxes. We send our vac truck out quarterly to clean the material out and clean the debris that collects in there because it does collect trash and litter. That's another benefit to these kinds of things. So it's just something that we do on a routine basis. It's no different than cleaning out storm inlets and stuff like that. And then next up is a, a project that combined a baffle box with a retention area over near Lake Beersford. We were able to acquire a couple of vacant parcels of land, and we were able to run, the water essentially runs through a storm water pond with a series of berms that have the BAM material in it. And then, uh, once it leaves there, it actually flows through the baffle box as well. So we're trying to maximize, based on the land area we have, the amount of treatment, the amount of nutrients that we can remove. And then, uh, this is one of the larger projects that's currently under construction. This is our first major project in the Mosquito Lagoon. It was the first one identified in the reasonable assurance plan. We're hoping to get it completed here in the next, uh, next three or four months. And this is a large-scale nutrient reduction system. The Gabordi Canal is a large, open-channel canal that conveys tremendous amounts of storm water runoff as well as base flow. And we're diverting that water into a large retention area that had, is, the bottom is lined with a sand filter and then a BAM material. It's going to go through there, get collected, and then discharge back in the Gabordi Canal. So this is a very large reduction of, we anticipate a very large reduction of nitrogen and phosphorus from this particular project. And then, um, we also have our Aerial Canal Project, which I mentioned earlier, which is, we've just received our bids on, and we anticipate starting construction soon. Very similar to Gabordi, except that we're using, we're modifying some existing retention areas down by Riverbreeze Park in Oak Hill. Same kind of situation, we got an open-channel canal discharging storm water and base flow into the lagoon. We're diverting that water into these ponds, running it through a treatment system, and then sending it its own way. And then goal two was to develop a reasonable assurance plan for the Mosquito Lagoon. This was the second goal in the water quality plan. We've talked about this a lot at council, and it was adopted in twenty nineteen. Very, you know, very proud to say the work of my predecessor at Roden Bridge, she did a wonderful job in moving this along. We had a series of public meetings that were, were heavily attended and lots of contribution from the local stakeholders as well as local environmental groups, and got input from, you know, all of them, and really put together a solid plan with, with the help of, of many different agencies. And we're, we're on our way to hopefully reducing those pollutant loadings and restoring the Mosquito Lagoon back to where it needs to be. And then for goal three, we're going to move on to utilities. So I'm going to pass, pass the remote over to Mike, so he can talk about it. remote over to Mike, so he can talk about it.
Always a fun topic when we start talking about OSTD remediation. Thanks a lot, Ben. If you ever, you ever meet a utility director that is excited about doing septic-to-sewer retrofits, it'll be the first one you ever meet. With that said, it's a real, it's a significant challenge and, yeah, working with partnerships and having a good understanding as to what the challenges are is really the first step. So, and as it relates to Goal Number Three and the goal for expanding sanitary sewer systems to one day reduce the high number of onsite sewage treatment systems, we're looking really within the highly sensitive areas of our water bodies and springs. The initial plan that was in there was really what I'd refer to as a 10,000-foot view of, as it pertains to the Mosquito Lagoon, Volusia Blue, Halifax, and Gemini. In that, it gave us kind of an idea as to what we were looking at. Now, you know, back then, they were discussing well over 100,000 conventional septic tanks, if you will, back at that point in time. We did an estimate of where we thought, you know, 15,000 of them should go. Because again, our goal is not to remediate every single septic tank in Volusia County, but rather to find them in the most sensitive areas and to work collectively to do something about them in those areas. And so we looked at, at that time, based on what we knew, at that time, 15,000 of them. And if you look in the plan, you'll see that the cost of that was in excess of $350 million back then. So it was a staggering amount. But again, it was something that at least gave us some perspective as to what we were going to be dealing with. So you can understand the real need to start seeking partnership and investment in whatever we were about to do. And a few successful examples of that would be working with the City of Oak Hill with their wastewater collection systems facility plan. There'll be more on that project later on. We worked with Orange City as they have goals in their 1792 core business area as well with developing wastewater and reclaimed master plan for that city. And with the City of DeBury, most recently with the completion of wastewater feasibility analysis report, which again, I'll be talking a little bit more about in the strategies and projects portion. But, you know, this is where you start to really realize that no one agency can do it all, but everybody needs to figure a way to do something. So again, going back on to the requirement for OSTD remediation, excuse me, I get tongue-tied on that once in a while. You know, it's going to be a constant competition for funding at the state level for these challenges because there's 2.6 million, at last count, 2.6 million septic tanks that exist throughout the entire state of Florida. So again, we're not alone in this type of situation. We just have to, you know, figure the best way, bring the best projects forth, the ones that make the most sense. And that's how you, and then deliver on those projects. And that's how you continue to gain confidence at our state agency as well as our regional agency, the Water Management District. You know, we've talked a lot about what some of these state rules are and things like that, but I can again tell you the committed staffs at DEP and St. John's River Water Management, they're all working for the same thing that we're trying to achieve as well. We're trying to find the best projects. We're trying to leverage dollars as best that we can, working together and combine with, you know, a success that achieves all, you know, our joint goals. But we have to do it through a lot of leveraging, as Ben pointed out, you know, the county's input into this, but then the results of that and those other agencies from federal through state through the Water Management District does achieve what we have so far. But we still have a long way to go. As it pertained to achieving Goal Three, what we also realized that you can't do much if you don't have a place to send it. So, you know, in this type of situation, Goal Four really became one of the key elements. Not only had to take a look at how we were treating water, but also be prepared to be able to, if we were going to go with conventional septic systems and bring them to the plants, we also had to have sufficient capacity. Now, this is another one of those pie charts, brings a pie chart to the numbers we were discussing earlier, where you can see that from the BMAP and the TMDL septic systems in this 100 square mile area is a key contributor, but you'll also notice that wastewater treatment plants were also part of the problem at 12% contribution between our reuse and our, and how we were treating, you know, at our plants, nitrogen and phosphorus. So as a result of that, you realize that if you're part of the problem, the first thing you need to start thinking about before you ask anybody else to change things is figure out how you're going to be part of the solution. And as a result of that, that's essentially what we attempted to do. Now, a few of you were here back in 2018 when we did our ribbon cutting at Southwest Regional. And, you know, it was a, it was a big factor. We went to advanced wastewater treatment at that plant. And at the same time, we decommissioned another plant. Because realizing when you're looking for multiple bottom lines here of operational efficiency, cost effectiveness, and water resource stewardship, you know, you're looking for multiple bottom lines in order to get, to get things done and to do them in the most cost-effective way. And so we realized that probably going to advance wastewater treatment within our three facilities didn't make as much sense as perhaps just expanding one of the facilities, going to advanced wastewater treatment and eventually decommissioning our other two. So while we had a groundbreaking for the one, the only thing we can celebrate is the fact that the other two are going away. So there won't be any groundbreakings there, but, you know, rest assured that we are working our very best to come across to meet these goals. And the results were very obvious and they're measurable because we knew how much our plant was putting out before and we know what it's achieving now. And so the nitrogen reduction at that time, based on the flows, was 27,000 pounds of nitrogen reduction, phosphorus reduction of 14,000 pounds. And we also added reclaimed water as a result of the fact that we were able to, in moving the water from our plant in Orange City, also known as the Fort Towns Plant, and moving that flow over to our plant in DeBury and creating that reclaimed water, we were helping to, again, increase our supply of water to offset groundwater pumping for irrigation as the areas continued to expand. I'd also like to just point out at this, is you can see the partners that were involved in this. This was a $12.7 million project. It was made possible by the Water Management District as well as the DEP. The project actually received recognition from an industry publication as a top 10 project throughout the entire coun, throughout the entire country. And again, kudos to my entire staff and our team because Florida Rural Water Association had recognized our organization as the Wastewater Treatment System of the Year back in 2018 as well. And it was a result of strategies and thinking beyond just, you know, what we needed to do, but thinking about what was going to be beneficial for the rest of the community as well. Back over to Ginger.
Okay. Well, I'll go through Goal Five, which was to provide education and outreach. So in the Water Quality Plan, we identified three specific projects and all of those projects are complete and/or ongoing. Also, in 2017, we added an additional project to create an outreach opportunity and a media campaign related specifically to septic systems and groundwater pollution. And that is also complete and ongoing. So, I want to talk a little bit about our fertilizer education campaign. This was actually established in 2015 as part of the, as a partnership with the other counties in the Indian River Lagoon. So we saw a very successful program happening over in the Tampa Bay area called Bee Floridian about a great, like, fun way to help people understand about fertilizer use and how to fertilize properly. And so we worked with them and we created our own campaign on the Indian River Lagoon side with the Marine Resources Council. And we have some really great marketing materials about our fertilizer ordinance and the restrictions that we have in our county for fertilizer application and how folks can comply with that. And so I have some stats here from 2019, which is, of course, the last pre-COVID year that we really were out in the community. But in 2019, we estimate that we reached over 150,000 people with our message through social media and some of the outreach events that we do. You can see our environmental management vehicle that's wrapped in the Bee Floridian, now Flamingo, which is always the last truck that somebody actually wants to drive because it's so loud out on the road. But it really brings that message, you know, out on the road. It's great. And we also display our How to Fertilize Like a Floridian flyers in the retailers of people that sell fertilizer. And I'm just a shameless plug right here. So one of the things that the state did a number of years ago, so the West Coast County successfully banned the sale of fertilizer in the rainy season. And they have seen a significant reduction in nutrients in the Tampa Bay area in addition to a lot of other things they've been doing. Well, the state preempted counties from doing that after that happened in the West Coast. So we are currently preempted from banning the sale or regulating the sale in any way of fertilizer. So our ordinance says you cannot apply fertilizer during the rainy season that contains nitrogen or phosphorus. But you can still buy it at Lowe's or wherever, right? So what we've done is worked with those retailers to provide our flyers next to the rack of fertilizer that's for sale that you can't apply to try to get the message out. And we have had good compliance or cooperation with retailers. But that's an example of how the state has impacted. They're saying you need to reduce fertilizer pollution, but we're not really going to let you, let you do the thing that's the easiest way to do that.
Can you put a picture of a dead manatee flyer that goes to Lowe's and...
Right. Maybe it's time to make those flyers a little less fun and a little more grim. So that's one of the programs. And so we've been implementing that very robustly since the beginning and we continue to do that. We have staff that's really dedicated to that. One of the other things, and this was added in 2017, we obtained a $240,000 grant from the EPA through the 319 Grant Program to do an education campaign in West Volusia. And we partnered with the West Volusia Cities on a number of things. We called it the Save Our Rivers Campaign. And it included a series of low-impact development workshops. It included a number of Save Our Springs and Rivers Academies where we in-depth teach folks about the issues with water pollution and the solutions to that. And then we did a social and marketing campaign about septic pollution. Because one of the things that we found is that people really don't understand groundwater, right? Surface water is a lot easier to understand. It's hard for people to get their head around groundwater and how they impact the groundwater. So we did some surveys about how, what people know and how they like to get their information. And not surprisingly, how they like to get their information isn't me talking to them. It's through social media and that kind of thing. So we created some, some marketing materials to get the message out. And maybe Megan can help me play the video. This is a 30-second PSA that we created.
It's going to work. Baby. Oh.
Do I have to do anything or I'm not touching anything? Okay.
Got to click the play button.
She did tell me there was a little delay when she was testing it earlier, so. Can I go? But is she not talking to me? All right, well, maybe we won't hear the video. It is on our website. It's kind of just a fun way to help people understand that, you know, just because we used to do something a certain way, doesn't mean we should still do it that way. We have learned some things and maybe we need to rethink the way we go. Uh-oh.
Could, maybe the three of you could just reenact it?
No, no, no.
Acting's not my forte.
If not, it's not a deal. We can just keep going. Okay. So I just wanted to include this slide to show, you know, those specific projects that were identified as part of the Water Quality Plan, you know, we've done those successfully. We continue to do those. But I wanted to point out all the other things that we do for outreach and education and environmental and have been doing, you know, since the beginning of time, right? Since Steve was the director. So you can see a few, like, social media posts. We do Imagine a Day Without Water every year. We do an Every Drop Counts campaign for water conservation. We have our annual cleanups, the Indian River Lagoon and Coastal Cleanup every September. And we do the St. John's River Cleanup in the spring of every year. And we do cleanups throughout the year, beaches and rivers and, you know, smaller cleanups throughout the year. We also have a monofilament line recycling program where we have these, it's on the right-hand side, these little recycling bins at all of the places where folks fish so that they can put their used monofilament in there. We recycle that so that it doesn't get into the environment. Mr. Robbins knows we also do underwater monofilament cleanups, which is fun and interesting to get that out of the marine environment. And we have a storm drain marking program. We've been doing that over 20 years, marking storm drains to let people know that what comes here matters, right? And it goes somewhere. And so you can see a photo of that up in the top. So we do a lot of outreach and education. That's one of the main parts of environmental management. And we can, we continue to do that. And everywhere we go, we talk about water. Sometimes we have our manatee, our manatee team out and of course, they're talking about water quality. And sometimes we have our fertilizer folks and that's all about water quality. So it's the theme that runs through all of the education that we do in environmental. And then for Goal Six, Goal Six was to improve and increase monitoring and research. Five projects were identified for Goal Six initially. Four are complete or ongoing and one was removed. And we'll talk a little bit about that. We established a goal or an action step to acquire continuous data loggers in the Mosquito Lagoon. And that was so that we could measure sort of event-based pollution. And we consulted with the other experts in water quality. The Water Management District has some continuous data loggers and they're problematic for them. They're glitchy, they foul really quickly in the environment and the data requirements, right? There's hundreds of thousands of pieces of data that then they have to keep and sort through. And so we actually changed our mind. And when we came to council in 2017, we removed that as a goal because of how problematic it was. And we truly don't have the data scientists like the district does to really sort through that kind of volume. So there are still data loggers in the wild, but they're DEP or Water Management District. So that was removed. But we added this, the action step to develop an interactive web-based water quality site where folks can look at the water quality data that we've collected. Because again, we've been doing water quality data collection since the 80s. It's an enormous amount of data and a really great data set to show trends. And so we added that goal in 2017 and we'll talk about where we are on that. So we've been sampling since 1988. We have about 90 locations. That varies. Some come and go. We typically monitor quarterly or monthly. Most of our water quality sampling is done by boat. Some of the sites are accessible by car. And those sites are chosen based on the long-term data set, for one, but also in consultation with the DEP and the district. So if a certain water body is coming due for an analysis, you know, it's the five-year cycle of a BMAP or a TMDL, we concentrate some more sampling in that location. Primarily, we do this long-term trend sampling, right? So we take samples on a regular basis at the same place so that we can compare those data over time. We do some event-based sampling or specific sampling, usually in partnership with Ben and his group. If they have a new baffle box and they want to see pre-post, you know, what the results are, we do some of that sampling as well. My staff collects the samples. We have a team that does the sample collection. All of our samples go to the Water Management District. We have a partnership with them. They actually do the analysis at their lab in Palatka. And that's a great partnership. So they don't have to do as much field collecting and we don't have to maintain a lab. For a number of years, we did have a lab. It was a very expensive proposition. So we have this partnership. It works really well. All of our data are stored... stored in the state and national database, right? So all of the data that we collect and that the St. John's analyzes is in these state databases that is used to determine impairments in water bodies and used to measure improvement in water bodies. But in addition, we maintain a database of all of our samples. So this is the first public look at our Aquarius web portal, and it is actually live. You can click on it now at volusia.org/waterquality, and there's a link to Aquarius. And it brings up this portal that you can look at the map. You can choose any of the parameters that we test for, and we test for, you know, I don't know, almost 100 different parameters, including a lot of metals. So you can click on a site, and you can see the most recent data at that site based on whatever parameter you're looking for. You can put in a date range. You can look at all the data. You can download the raw data to analyze on your own. You can really easily pull up graphs. So you can say, I want to know what's happened in the last 10 years, and it'll graph it. Or for the springs and for the lagoon, we have, you see these little dials. We have a little dashboard for those. And so you can sort of see at a glance, if you pick nitrogen, for instance, right, you can see what is the nitrogen looking like at this spring right now, the last sample. So and we have the little dial to say, you know, oh, is it exceeding the nutrient standard? Is it within the nutrient standard? It's sort of an at-a-glance. Now, it's brand-new, so it's still a little glitchy. But at the very top of the web portal is the information to contact Kelly Young. She's our water quality specialist. And so if anybody wants a tutorial, or you need help accessing the data or understanding what your data are showing, Kelly and anyone, you know, Environmental Management, we're happy to walk you through it, help with any questions. But all of the data is available now to the public on this portal.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about that? Does council, does anybody else have a... This is, that's tremendous. I want to ask everybody that's sitting out here. I had this question came to my mind before when you were talking about education and all of the information that we have available on the volusia.org website. How many of you in this room, raise your hand if you've ever gone to the county website and looked at the educational information, the videos that we have? Oh, that's why you're here today. That's good. Please share it on social media. How many of you will now go look at Aquarius? I hope every hand goes up. Please share that, too. Ginger, let me, on that system, you said it, there's a lot of different data sources, even metals?
Parameters, yes. So at different sites, we test for different parameters. In the lagoon in particular, the district is really interested in metals, and so there are a lot of parameters that deal with metals. But all of that is available.
Is there any way to, I know it's, in just a water test, it's really, really expensive to test for pesticides or pharmaceuticals. Is there any way to...
There are ways. We don't...
Really expensive?
Right, yeah.
And complicated?
And you have to have the lab that can do that. So we don't test for bacteria. So we don't test for fecal coliform routinely, and we don't test for some of those things like pharmaceuticals or super lows, or some of those markers for sort of human waste. Those can be tested on an individual basis, but the routine sort of all-the-time monthly sampling, we don't do that.
Do you, are you familiar, or Mike, maybe you are, with University of Florida's Gator Bite, the little buoy? Is that, is it released? It doesn't go that far either, though, does it?
No. What I understand about the Gator Bite at this point in time, as I've talked with Dr. Bean with regards to that, I understand that they're using it in some of the springs or the rivers to, not the springs so much, but the rivers, to kind of track data through there. As it pertains to wastewater, and there's no application within any of the pipes which we have or anything right now. But I know it's an emerging technology, or an embryonic one, but I think it's certainly worth seeing. I hope that he's able to, you know, work with the state or the water management districts to let us know if this is a very good, you know, if this is a device which will help us analyze these things. Because at the end of the day, we're always concerned about what the state and what the Water Management District agree upon with us as to what's there. So if they can get some of these technologies that folks are bringing forth, get them vetted at the state and water management district levels, you know, we'll take all the tools we can possibly get.
Yeah, it's cheap, and it collects data all by itself. For the public that's not familiar with it, you can search it on social media. I think it's Gator Bite, B-Y-T-E. And it could be exciting. Last question for you, Mike, that I forgot to ask before. Where are the reports for the bacterial levels in Gemini? Can we see those somewhere?
Yeah, we're trying to track that down. We, Kelly, just, that's Kelly Young. She's our water quality specialist. When we had our own lab, right, we partnered with the State Department of Health, and we had a lab over on Indian Lake. We routinely sampled the springs for bacteria. That lab went away in 2012, and that's why now we partner with the district. We, the county, has not done bacteria testing since then. Kelly is tracking down the person at the Health Department that may have more information about more recent bacteria testing at Gemini. The latest results we have are from about 2012.
It's still closed for swimming. But, so we don't really know, though, what the bacteria level is?
Typically, the Department of Health is in charge of testing swimming areas for bacteria, and so that's why we're trying to reach them to find out if they're doing any routine testing, or if they're not, because it's not a swimming area, now they don't test it. I don't know the answer to that right now, but we are actively trying to get one.
The public would like it to be a swimming area, what it saves, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay. So I just, again, want to point out, Kelly, to you, she did an enormous amount of work on this Aquarius. As you can imagine, you know, 30-plus years of data porting it into a new system. It's been a bit of work, but she and her team are really fabulous. And they're out there, you know, every day of the week doing water quality testing. So, you know, if you're out there and you see them, say hi. It sounds like a wonderful job, and I'm always envious, but then some days it's like really, really cold, and some days it's really, really hot. So I don't know. I guess it evens out. Okay, so Goal Six also included the action item to seek expansion of the designation of the IRL to the North County Line. And that actually was achieved in 2016. The IRL Council voted to approve that expansion, and it was approved by EPA also in 2016. So you can see that map on the right added that large basin to the Indian River Lagoon National Eshuary Program, which is important because it makes projects in that area eligible for IRL Council funding. And so that's a really good thing. So, check. That one's done. And this is you?
Ginger.
Yes.
I love the check. Would you, would you like to see that check moved further north?
I don't think that the data actually support having the IRL north. That actually flows out to Matanzas Inlet. And so I think that probably is the further north that the water actually flows south into Ponte Inlet.
How far north does it go now? Where's the line for the IRL designation?
At, just south of the county line.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I guess I have the first portion of legislation, but we'll share all of this. You know, from year to year to year, there are bills that go across, and it's not just the three of us, but, you know, our county legal and John Booker in his office, and, you know, again, a total team effort in trying to address any and all, looking at these legislative areas that are being addressed. There's a lot of people that are working to, you know, understand some of these things and also prepare us in advance of, even if it doesn't get passed this year, it could be coming down the line, you know, in future years and that. So it's on the radar of many county staff members throughout. I'm going to just hit on the one element again that was probably the most far-reaching in terms of, as it affected our utility. But as I said, I'll let Ginger go through the myriad of other bills. But this one was most significant. And as mentioned earlier, you know, the group of outstanding Florida Springs throughout the state, affecting nine counties of the 67 that exist. And again, point out to you that there are a few more Blue Springs out there than we can, than we really realized, especially myself, as I started looking at this. But all of those are state parks as well. It's just that ours is quite iconic and for its, for the size of it, its first magnitude, and of course, the habitat for our manatee, such a critical portion of, you know, of our entire existence over here in West Volusia, if you will, in terms of quality of life and what it provides, along with the other two springs as well. So again, the state mandated elements of a septic system remediation plan was in this, and each one of our springs were affected by it. And so I just wanted to zero in a little bit on this to explain, you know, what the elements of the septic system remediation plans are, because we've completed one in working with the city of DeBery on Gemini. We are just about complete with the one in Dillion, and a little bit more story on that as we get into the projects. And then we're going to be initiating one in Volusia Blue, and that's going to be quite an undertaking because it encompasses 100 square miles and five cities in addition to county. So there will be, you know, significant discussions and figuring out the way of how all of us can be able to do something to address some of these issues. Strategy that I'd like to share with you, or at least talking to you about some of the strategies that exist right now based on these two pie charts. I grouped the two of them here because, one, they're right in our backyard of Southwest Regional Water Reclamation Facility in DeBery. This, our facility, which is a regional provider of reclaimed water service and treatment, we serve the cities of DeBery as well as Orange City and a portion of Deltona at the present time. And so in looking at this, and again, having to come up with a remediation plan to address the septic systems that exist out there, we also need to think about other multiple bottom-line issues that I mentioned earlier. And that's, of course, you know, increasing wastewater and biosalads treatment capacity at Southwest Regional is going to be, is going to be critical to be able to do something about these challenges. Increasing reclaimed water supply and storage as growth continues is to reduce the amount of reliance on groundwater for irrigation purposes. Implement the OSTD remediation plan, and above all things, seek DEP grant funding, you know, for these conversions, because these are very, very expensive types of conversions. And as was mentioned earlier today, you know, our county can't just absorb all this on our own, nor should the individual resident be responsible for the entire cost of these types of things. We have to find equity. We have to figure out things that make sense. And again, when you're talking about what we're doing, we need to look at each one of these springs as a separate, but then we look for some comparative purposes to see how can we achieve multiple bottom lines. And so in Southwest Volusia, you know, these are some of the other considerations, obviously hitting the springs protection targets for water quality as well as supply. We haven't talked a lot about supply, but that's another issue for another day, but certainly significant. You know, attaining regional economic goals that exist specifically within the I-4 corridor of these cities and what everybody is, their jobs are important, you know, prosperity, balance, balance above all things as well, balance in all of the types of things that you as a council face on a day basis with all of the different types of challenges. And we, you know, until, you know, we're just a popular place to be. Continued population growth is something we have to prepare for as well as manage as best as we can. Doesn't mean that we have to be doing the same business-as-usual tactics, but we certainly can't, you know, avoid the fact that people are going to want to continue to come here. And, you know, it's a beautiful state, and it's affordable, and we should just be expecting it. We just need to figure out how to best deal with Dillion is, again, an interesting one, and I separated it there from the standpoint is because this was an area where there was virtually no infrastructure that actually exists up in this area, nothing within three miles of, three to four miles of the spring in terms of central sewer and central water for the most part. And so the strategy here is a little bit different. Noteworthy here is that in the initial BMAP that was done, or the TMDL reported, identified that septic systems were 14% impacted within, you know, within this spring shed. But when they started looking at the priority focus area, they had determined that septic systems had a higher contributing source. And so that's what tipped the scale for why we had to develop a remediation plan up into this, up into this area. But I think that, as we'll discuss more, you know, looking forward, the goal here is never about trying to go and retrofit every single septic system, but in this case, getting central sewer and water systems up into this area is a means to help as growth continues to occur, is to have infrastructure in place so that you don't have more septic systems, more wells that are even closer to that spring that could have even a greater impact. This is one of the rare occasions where, you know, where probably what we know 20 or 30 years ago with the other urbanized areas has said, boy, if we could have done something about having some of this infrastructure in place back then, we'd be so much better off. This is actually a place where we can actually do something about it right here, right now. And that's what makes this exciting about it. I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Okay, so this slide just shows a list of some of the bills in the 2022 session that have some impact on water quality, some, and our ability as a county to make changes, improve water quality, et cetera. Some of these are good for the county. Some of these are not so good for the county, right? I'm not going to explain or go through all of them. Just sort of an example of, this is what, just from one session, that your staff is making sure that we stay on top of it, you know, engaging with our groups, like wastewater associations and our professional groups, to look at all of the potential impacts of legislation every year. And then once things pass, working with our county attorney's office to then implement whatever we need to do. So I'm not going to try to discuss the merits of any of them, but there's, every year, this is a situation for us. Next, we're going to get into this section about sort of emerging issues. And this is our way to say, you know, since the Water Quality Plan was adopted and since we updated it in 2017, what have we, what are other issues that maybe we need to be thinking about or paying attention to, or in some cases have been, but maybe need to include in the Water Quality Plan? So this first slide is a discussion about sustainability and resilience. And so, you know, Volusia County has been engaged in sustainability efforts since 2008 at least. The county manager at the time instituted our Green Volusia Program to talk about sustainability. And we received a large grant in 2010 to work on energy efficiency and sustainability in the county. And we adopted a sustainability action plan at that time and set some greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. And we've built on that plan over the years. And so these are just a couple of the other plans. In 2017, Volusia County partnered with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council to do a Resilient Volusia County Plan. We have, since then, adopted our Regional Resiliency Action Plan. Ms. Wheeler sits on our collaborative, our East Central Florida Regional Collaborative with the Planning Council and the other counties in our area. We've done another, we've done Resilient Volusia Phase Two, which looks at areas that are very vulnerable to sea level rise, and looking at ways that we can adapt those areas specifically to make them less vulnerable, to help the people that are in those areas. And so what we've And so we've also worked with Stetson on a grant. So we've been working hard at the staff level on sustainability and resilience. And so far, we've had over $1.3 million worth of grant money to do this work. We have a grant in right now to the DEP for another $880,000 project that would update our inventory of critical assets as defined by state statute that's been recently redefined and then do a vulnerability analysis on those assets. And so that would again be a partnership with the Planning Council. And that would help our cities as well because there's been recent legislation and, and a lot of funding related to resilience projects. And, but in order to be eligible for that resilience funding, we have to have a vulnerability analysis that meets these new state standards. And so the good news is the state is going to pay for communities to do the vulnerability analysis. And then once we do that, we'll be eligible for projects, grant funding for projects. And so we're going to work with our cities because if we do the analysis and the cities include their critical infrastructure, then they'll be eligible for those dollars as well. So, so that's another project. It hasn't specifically been part of the water quality plan, but it certainly has implications for water quality and we're going along that path as well. Another one that of course has been a big focus is low impact development and green infrastructure. This slide just shows you some of the flyers from the variety of low impact development workshops that we've done. So just as a starting point, you know, low impact development is sort of this term that describes just a, a variety of practices, right? It's not one thing, but a variety of practices that mimic or preserve natural drainage processes to manage stormwater, right? So it's basically about retaining stormwater on site and encouraging it to soak in on site rather than let it collect and then run off somewhere else. So in environmental management, we've been focused on low impact development pretty, pretty heavily since 2017 as a way to avoid additional runoff pollution. We've conducted 11 different community workshops and numerous outreach efforts, including we've brought in LID professionals from academia and from the private sector. All of those workshops are available on our YouTube channel and so have the little, the little link up there. But if you, on the PDF, of course, you can't click on the link, but if you just go to YouTube and you Google Volusia County Low Impact Development, our channel will come Interestingly, in 2020, we worked with VCard to develop a survey and implement a survey to VCard members about low impact development, trying to gauge their knowledge of low impact development as an option and then also talk to them about what they see as the barriers to implementation. Because what we heard a lot in our workshops was, it's hard to do, it's, it's hard to implement, you know? So we worked with Kerry Carl at VCard and we, we got that survey out and had some really interesting results. And then we took that information and said, all right, well, based on what the, the folks in the development community are telling us, how do we need to reach out? What, what more information do we need to provide and in what ways? And so we've used that and, and VCard has used that to then bring more attention to low impact development in the county. Also in this, on this topic, and I know, you know, Dr. Jones is going to speak a little bit later and he's going to give us some really great real world examples, but you know, we've, we've, in the county, we're working down that path, right? So in 2019 and in 2021, we've added low impact development language into the elements of our comp plan. So in our coastal element, our aquifer recharge element and our drainage sub element, now there is a, a statement in there that we will encourage the use of low impact development for the treatment of stormwater. So remember way back, you know, several hours ago, the, the comp plan is the start, right? That's, that's sort of our vision and then that can be translated into land development code. And so we, we've gotten some comp plan language in. So we're, we're moving in that direction, right? And with your help and your direction today and in the future. Okay, this one I'm handing over.
So another emerging issue that's actually been a little bit in the news recently is residuals and biosolids. So when it comes to wastewater, a wastewater treatment plant produces, you know, the goal at a wastewater treatment plant is to produce basically liquid effluent that's treated to, we treat ours to, in the advanced wastewater treatment process to remove nitrogen and, and phosphorus. However, you still end up with a certain amount of solids. I'm not going to go into detail on this, but the goal is to reduce the amount of solids produced at a wastewater treatment plant. That's one aspect of biosolids. You also have porta potty waste, grease trap waste from restaurants, that's another. Those are typically pumped out by private companies and taken to private treatment facilities. And then you have your septic solids, which is anytime, you know, you get your, your septic tank pumped out, that solid material has to go somewhere. It's either taken to a facility operated by the septic company you hired, or it might just be taken to another private company that runs a septic facility. So, you know, there's a lot of concern about, you know, how do these biosolids get treated? And then where do they go once they're treated? And in most cases, a lot of them are, are land applied. Now, on the large scale wastewater treatment side, for instance, most, some municipalities and facilities have treatment for their biosolids that they can treat it up to what we call Class A, which essentially turns it into something you could use as fertilizer on, on your lawn. The, a lot of your septic facilities do the very minimal amount of treatment, which is called stabilization. They basically raise the pH to 12 for a certain period of time and then they land apply it at a facility that is permitted by the state, by the DEP. So it's, it, it's important to note that wherever, whatever's providing that wastewater treatment, there are going to be solids, whether it's a central sewer going to a wastewater plant, whether it's, or whether it's a septic tank getting pumped out and sent to a septic As I said before, land application of these biosolids is regulated by the DEP. We do have some county ordinances that require some requirements for those facilities within Volusia County. Currently, there are two permitted sites in Volusia County. There's a 50 acre site in DeLan and a 140 acre site in Osteen. These are both private land application sites associated with facilities that take primarily septic tank waste. There are no permitted sites for what we call solid residuals. For instance, in Volusia County, at our Southwest Plant, we have a process where we take that solid material and it gets dried. Essentially turns it into dry material and it's hauled off to a separate facility where they actually treat it to a Class A level. So as I said, we, we take it to that private facility. You know, septic systems generate a lot of these wastes and a lot of the, 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 when you hear about a permit for land application, generally it's because it's not being treated to a Class A level. It has to be permitted and generally it's stabilized septic residuals. So we don't operate any land application site. We send it to a contractor that takes it to that Class A level. But, you know, we're also working, there's a facility, that facility in Osteen, we're currently working with them to, because we're in the process of modifying both of our large scale plants. And Mike allude, Mike mentioned it, but we're also looking at how we treat our biosolids. We're not one of the largest utilities in the county. You know, the cities gen, have a lot more customers. We have 16,000 customers and then we take additional wastewater from Orange City and some other places. But generally speaking, your cities are the largest producers of these types of biosolids. So we're looking at all options as far as how we treat our biosolids. Now, we'd like to get to a point where, you know, we're treating our biosolids to a Class A type material that would provide, you know, fertilizer for people, you know, way, either we get it to a company and they sell it, or maybe we were able to give it out to folks free. But either way, we want to get to that point where the biosolids we are generating as a county meet those highest levels. And then we, we need to work with our regional partners and ensure that, you know, because I think the goal is to not have these land application of basic stabilized biosolids. I don't think anybody wants that. So we're working with some of these private companies. We're, we're hoping to work with some of our cities and look at some regional type solutions to this, to this issue. I'm going to hand it off to Mike and he's going to talk more about some utility.
Thank you, Ben. So for a moment, as we, as we look to what's, what's upcoming, I think it's just a moment to again, thank and, and congratulate really council on your decision, this ARPA funding, which you've made available for the protection of, of the springs and the IRL. It's a very difficult decision that, that you had to come, that you had to arrive at. There are many needs throughout, throughout our entire county. And yet your investment of, of $25 million toward two of the projects that I'm going to be describing meant a great deal because we were able to take that $25 million and leverage it and tell the state, we're serious about what we need to do, are you with us? And the state has also stepped up in this, in this case and said, the county's ready to go, we're ready to go too. And they're bringing, they're adding $20 million more into this, into this solution. So I mean, your investment into water quality has paid dividends beyond even what I, what I even imagined at the start, but I think that it's encouraging. And again, I, I wish to thank all of you for, I don't get to thank you very often from that standpoint, but this, this, I can really appreciate the efforts that you had to do and all the decisions you had to make. So with that said, to give you a little bit more, I also think that advocacy is just such a critical step in this as well, not only your decision-making process, but also all the advocates and Ginger hit on this, through the years, I have relied on, on letters, letters of support that have come from Blue Spring Alliance, Gemini Spring Alliance, community support from the Dillion Spring Community Association. VCard, Team Volusia have been involved in, in these decisions. The League of Voters of Volusia County, the Riverside Conservancy, and I, I regret if I've missed anybody, but I can think of people who have written letters or support and, and have helped keep the, the conversations going through all, throughout all of this process. And I think it's important because even, as I mentioned, all those different agencies, because everybody realizes that water connects us. It connects us to our economy, it connects us to our quality of life, it, it connects us to recreation, business, everything. It, it's everything. And so again, I just wanted to take that moment to just, to recognize everybody for, for the efforts, not just that, you know, that we're talking about today, but for everybody that's also been in this room and has joined us through this period of time. So how do I best describe two outstanding Florida Springs, five cities and illustrate this strategy? This, I'm not sure if this is going to work or not, we'll, we'll soon find out. Our regional strategy began with that, that small star, if you will, that I just put down there, that yellow star, which initially expanded our facility and went to advanced wastewater treatment down in our DeBery plant, which allowed us to reduce the, or actually decommission the plant there at Fort Towns in Orange City. We, we redirected flow from, from that facility through a series of force main and collection systems to get it back to the plant so that we could treat it at AWT levels. That was one of the first stages. Most recently completed, though the final, final stage of this is probably still another year or two off, but was the, the decommissioning or rerouting of flow from our facility in Deltona North, up in that 472 area. And again, constructing three miles of force main connecting through Orange City, actually under I-4, through Orange City and all the way back to DeBery to address, to address this issue. It's by far a, a much more economical strategy than to have gone to advanced wastewater treatment at all three of these facilities within, within the spring shed. And that facility, which does support, as I said, the cities of DeBery, Orange City, portion of Deltona, was, was a critical strategy. As we look to the future, we've had conversations with the city of Deltona about what they're going to be doing with their, with their plant known as the Fisher plant. There's been some articles in the paper that address, they're, they're facing the same challenges we looked at. Would it make more sense to actually invest into that plant or would it make more sense to build infrastructure and, and bring it to this regional facility? We haven't completed discussions on that, but right now, all indications are is that the city, you know, is looking at that. Because again, we're all looking to try to come up with solutions that make the, the most sense for, for everyone. And so sometimes our water does cross jurisdictional boundaries, if you will, as it should. And so again, my, my hats off to the, to all of these cities that I've had to cooperate and work with. We'll be doing a lot more of it, especially as we have to engage in the wastewater remediation strategy for Blue Spring. But I just wanted to try to illustrate for you a couple of these, these factors at the local government level, but again, also in working in cooperation with DEP and St. John's, how critical that, that has been, along with all of the, the advocacy that we've received out there throughout the community. Okay, I guess I left it. So after closing Fisher, we're just, this is part of the process, is expanding this, this facility from 2.7 up to a 5 MGD facility. This also increases our reclaimed water supply offering, which is going to be critical as again, growth continues. And we want to, we want to make sure that everybody that's coming in, you know, these new complexes, these new developments throughout Orange City, DeBery, the land are, are moving to reclaimed water and not relying upon groundwater for their irrigation purposes. Gemini Springs is another example and again, a terrific story of, of, you know, what's, what's going on, this working in cooperation now with the advocacy group Gemini Springs Alliance, but also the city of DeBery and the, and the, and the DEP. This is a very, very, you know, bold and bold decision by the city, DeBery council as to what, what they're attempting to do. You know, every, every city has the same concerns, tax base, property, property taxes, you know, quality of life. They're also seeking, as, as we've seen most recently, develop a town center with prosperity. They're close to, they're close to Sunrail and so, so when I discuss things with the city manager about, you know, what those city goals are and things, it's, it's balance. But they also understand that, that stormwater protection as well as green space and, and addressing, you know, some of these, these critical issues of septic tank remediation to protect that spring are all, are all challenges that, that they're addressing on a, on a, on a level that's just not looking at one thing, but looking at, you know, a very integrated approach to these types of things. There is a link that's there, they're, they've been very transparent about, you know, the meetings that have been held, the decisions that have made, the considerations that councils have, that not only you have to think about, but they thought about as well. And I'll say that, you know, again, as, as things evolved, the, the bottom line is, is they had to consider when they were talking about this remediation issue, there will be a cost of doing something, but there will also be a cost of doing nothing. And that's what they really had to come to grips with. And rather than me try to narrate that, you know, I would encourage you to either reach out and talk to those officials or, or certainly view some of the, the video that was, that was done at that point in time. Dillion Springs, again, as, as I mentioned earlier, an opportunity to actually do something that I bet many of us wish we could have done when we were looking at Blue and, Blue and Gemini, an opportunity to actually get infrastructure up into an area to prevent the proliferation of more wells and more septic tanks even closer to that spring. Now I'll say that, you know, again, great story of advocacy as well as community discussions that, that took place. Again, it's, it's not the goal of what we're attempting to do here is to, is to go in and, and, you know, uproot people's ways of lives right now with regards to septic tank remediation, but we have to be able to do something. We want to put infrastructure in a place where it's welcomed, where the, where the community really, really wants to greet it because prosperity has been important. Certainly the, in, in March, we'll be addressing not only the feasibility analysis report, but also DEP will be bringing us a, again, another grant for close to $4 million to go on top of the 2.5 that they've already given for this infrastructure. And now we'll be bringing the construction project through as well. But, but again, the, the goal here was to consider a lot of community input in various areas. And so the infrastructure that we're putting into had a lot of support along that core areas, along US 17, business support within that community. And again, to get that infrastructure up into an area to prevent any, any new development that would, because we know that development's going to come, but we want that, that development to be able to have, have that infrastructure in place so that they can, you know, not, not have an impact closer, closer to the spring. So we're very proud of that. Dr. Erin Reed is our project manager and, and will be involved in that. She's been She's been working very closely with the community, as well as with, you know, with our, our district and DEP and the city of Deland, because at the end of the day, when we're done with this project, as I mentioned earlier, we're not, we weren't even the utility that's closest to this. We will manage this project, we will lead in this project, but eventually, it, it's highly likely that the city of Deland will be the ultimate provider up in this area, because again, it just makes the most sense to do it that way. Over in southeast Volusia, again, with the mention of the, the IRL and, and the Northern Basin BMAP that, that occurred, once, once having a facility that, that met the environmental and our operating permit requirements, no longer we have, we have to up our game here. So going to advanced wastewater treatment in southeast Volusia is, is essential as well. And we will pretty much model the same type of philosophy as we did over in Southwest. We will go to advanced wastewater treatment, we will double, double the capacity in, in the process. We also, as Ben mentioned, you know, addressing the biosalogs and septage. This will be an area where we will attempt to bring a really good mechanism for, for treating the septage in, in this particular area as, as a means to again, you know, improve, improve how methods are done right now. More to be said on this as we, as we initiate design, which will be coming in the next couple of months, and we're gonna learn a lot in that process. But I would anticipate that within three years, we'll be, we will achieve the goals of what we've, what we've set out to do here. This is another story of advocacy, and again, incredible working cooperation by, by among one of the smallest cities in, in all of Volusia County, the city of Oak Hill. I mean, you're talking about folks, council members and the mayor going door to door to, to tell a story within, within Indian River Lagoon, or in the Indian Harbor Estates, to, to bring about a septic to sewer conversion that's, that's about to take place in this area. Many years coming and, and everything, but also in doing that, bringing on all of these partners who are contributing to this project. And you can see who's, who's there, the, the Indian River Lagoon Council, the city of Oak Hill, along with Volusia County, St. John's River Water Management, and DEP. And, and again, it's a, it's a terrific story of, of what's possible when, when everybody attempts to do something. And that's, that's pretty much the way that we're gonna have to continue to do things as things go along.
All right, so we're getting close to wrapping up our presentation here. Obviously, it's a lot, it's a lot to cover. Water quality is an issue that touches many things, like Mike said, it connects us all. And I just wanna, you know, look back a little bit and talk about the 2015 plan and the six goals. You know, improve stormwater treatment, develop the reasonable assurance plan, expand sanitary sewer system and reduce septic tanks. Reduce nutrient concentration in our wastewater discharge. Provide education and outreach, and then improve increased monitoring and research. So that, that plan, and it was updated in 2017 with a few other things, but that's kind of been our, our guidebook as staff moving forward. And I hope we've shown that we have implemented and implemented procedures, projects, all kinds of things to address those specific six goals. And so, you know, looking back, you know, our waters are a shared resource. You know, we've talked about this, they don't adhere to jurisdictional lines. It's a shared responsibility. And because they cross over those jurisdictional lines, this is a, a statewide concern for pollutants in our, in our surface waters and in our springs. And ultimately, state regulations and to a certain extent, because they enforce the federal regulations, they govern the determination of how those waters are determined to be impaired and what are those restoration requirements. But they put those requirements, a lot of them, as Ginger showed in the one slide, a lot of those requirements end up on us, on the counties and the cities. And even though these are statewide, even though statewide, these problems are assessed in the billions of dollars, state funding is still only being made available in millions of dollars. So, you know, we're always gonna be battling that funding issue. And, you know, the county water quality plan that we developed in 2015, it sets a framework, but it's only one part of the overall solution when initiating these regional projects. We gotta work with, you know, our cities, our state agencies, our advocacy groups, because without a collaborative approach, we're not getting anything done. And so, on that end, the, the local environmental advocacy groups have, play a tremendous role in, in what we do, I think. You know, Mike listed a, a bunch, Ginger listed some, and I'm sure there's others that we've missed. And, and, you know, that support from those groups, when those letters go to the DEP and the Water Management District or to the state legislatures, it, it means a lot. That's how we're able to, to, to get, you know, that's, helps us in getting that grant funding. And ultimately, this is a generational issue. You know, we've been focused, and, and a little bit of the history, the county has been focused on environmental water quality and pollution since the eighties. And, but we all know that these are issues that are gonna be, that we're gonna have to deal with moving forward. And Mike said it, he kinda stole the thunder of this slide, but no one group can do it all, but everyone must do something. So with that, we're gonna talk a little bit about the, the six goals and, and some recommended updates to those six goals, based on what we've completed. I'm not gonna run through them all, but the, the text in, in orange is red, is kind of the modifications or the ads that we would like to see in the water quality plan. Item number two, you know, obviously we developed the reasonable assurance plan. Now, we gotta implement that reasonable assurance plan. And that's gonna be the goal moving forward in constructing those projects and then monitoring the water quality to ensure that those projects are having the intended effect. Three and four, you know, talked about it, when the initial water quality plan was initiated, the springs legislation hadn't been passed, so a lot of these have to do with, you know, addressing the springs issues and making sure that that's incorporated into the water quality plan. And a lot of those issues are associated with utilities. Obviously, the, the reduced, the reduction of the nutrient. We're, you know, we're looking to implement those projects that councils already actually directed us to move forward with. And then finally, you know, provide education and outreach, continue to do what we're doing, you know, get creative, maybe geared, you know, geared towards more towards social media and make sure we're getting the message out as best we can. And then obviously, on the monitoring side, doing whatever we can to increase the public's ability to access this data and, and provide it to folks through the Aquarius Portal, and also to continue to work together to monitor the projects that, that we're implementing. So with that said, we've identified the six goals and maybe some changes there. You know, these are some additional goals that, you know, council, and it's not just limited to this, but that council might wanna take up and add to the water quality plan as, as a, as an update. So we've, you know, water supply, that, that's an issue, obviously. As more and more people move to the area, water supply's gonna become an issue. Like we touched on before, the Water Management District is ultimately responsible for who and, who can pump out and how much, but I think it's, you know, the county can have a say in that as well. And then, you know, low impact development, we're gonna hear from Dr. Jones after this presentation, but if, if the council's desire to add a goal related to resiliency or low impact development. And then if there's anything on the legislative front, you know, that we wanna address or, or monitor, or take a look at, or oppose, or promote, you know, the, the big one, Ginger's fertilizer preemption, which, I mean, like, like you said, it was paying dividends until, until they preempted it, so. And then obviously, you know, it's not listed in, in, in the goals of the original plan, but in kind of achieving a lot of these goals, we had to collaborate with cities and regional partnerships. And I think that's something moving forward that we're really gonna have to focus on, because funding is, is scarce, and, and the more we partner and turn these into regional solutions, the more, the more I think we'll be able to get, get it done. So that is really all we have. It was a lot, and we're happy to answer any questions, and...
We'll, we'll start with Billy.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I, I knew we did a lot. I knew, you know, unfortunately, the public doesn't know what all we've been doing consistently. We've had goals and we've been obtaining them. But moving forward, you know, I say yes to every single thing you've got on here. Yes, we're ready, this is the next step. I think collaboration is going to be the key on a lot of this with the cities. Maybe organizing a work group from outside. I was just talking with Shalish Patel, if he's still here. And he's already volunteered to be on any kind of group moving forward. But the more information we get in to think outside of our box, you know, and maybe even yours, do we have someone specifically just setting out hunting for grants other than you guys working your tail ends off for it? There, there's another thing, you know, can we work with other areas to collaborate efforts to get grants? I mean, we should have somebody out there pumping all the time. And you guys obviously are just running like crazy with everything that you're doing and have been so successful. But, you know, can we get some help on that? I think that's an important thing. Education academies, you know, I love that idea, and, and again, informing people out there what we're dealing with, how we're going to go moving forward. Standards review, definitely we need to look at our ordinances. And I think that's gonna be a real priority with us. So I'm, I'm excited with this, I'm encouraged to see all the things we've been doing, but as, as times have changed, we need to be looking at the next, okay, where do we go now? Because we've been a little bit ahead of things, and I think we've been really good on staying ahead. So let's just keep moving forward. I love your additional goals, and my answer is yes, let's do them all.
And I, I would just like to say, I think, you know, going back to 2015, a lot of the focus was on restoration. And I think, you know, when we sat down and went through this presentation, it's, you know, we're in the middle of the restoration, you know, and I think moving forward, we need to look at being proactive and preventing the impacts, you know, like Mike had talked about, preventing the impacts before then.
Couple of questions from, back from what Mike was talking about, but before, before I ask him, let me ask you about time. We have, next is Dr. Jones. I don't know what your schedule is, if we take a lunch break before or plow on through, because I don't, I don't wanna lose everybody that's out here before, if we send them to lunch and they don't come back, especially the, I see members of the development community here, and I would, I really want them to be involved in, in what Dr. Jones says.
I, I really think we need to have a break and, and everybody get up and stretch their legs and have lunch. I, I need to get revigorated here, and, and it's important enough, I just feel like there's, everybody's gonna stick around, this is good stuff, this is a good workshop.
And it'll give us time to load his presentation up.
Okay, just a couple real quick things, Mike, that we've talked a lot about reclaimed water, using it for irrigation. Is, sometimes we, we do things, we try things, and then we learn as we go along that they weren't always good. Is there any, I don't know the answer to this, so I'm, I'm asking you, is there any concern that, pardon me?
Probably not alone either.
Oh, is there any concern that reclaimed water, even though it has reduced nitrogen and phosphorus, it still has some in it? Is there a possibility we're gonna learn that there's no difference from applying that as to applying fertilizer? Are we hurting ourselves?
I would say in the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus in reclaimed water is significantly less than fertilizer.
It is, but it's constant.
It is. But you, but there's, there's a component to, that effluent's gonna go somewhere, right? That effluent's gonna go, you know, for years, they discharge them into rivers, lakes and streams. Or they put them in percolation ponds and they go into the ground. The big advantage to reclaimed water, and I, and I think I, I know this from our budget presentation that's coming up in a week, I wanna say we, it's 4 million gallons of water we pump a day or, or treat a day, and then reclaimed is, is 1.9 million. So that's, you know, a, a large, for every gallon of reclaimed water that's used in irrigation, it's a gallon of water that's not pumped out of the ground. So the, the understanding the fact that, you know, reclaimed water is treated to a very high level in order, and we have advanced treatment that reduces those nutrients, but you have the added effect of reducing the amount of water that you're pumping from the ground.
And I will say too, that in our educational efforts, we encourage people who are on reclaimed water to not add additional commercial fertilizer, because they are getting some nutrients in their reclaimed water. So we include that message when we're out talking to folks and in our materials as well.
And don't drink from the hose?
I mean, I drink from the hose.
Well, not the hose.
With reclaimed water?
You're not supposed to hook, no, you're not supposed to hook a hose up to reclaimed water. There's a reason there's no hose bibs on the reclaimed service.
On the Dillion Springs septic to sewer, that's going to the Deland wastewater treatment plan?
Yep.
Does, is that an advanced?
They're in that process right now, as a matter of fact, upgrading. They were already doing, they already had reduced nutrients, pretty, pretty low, but they're, they are converting to advanced wastewater treatment, so yes. It's required, it's required under the whole BMAP, so.
Is there a requirement, I, I don't know if they have it, I know some cities still have cast iron pipes under the ground, steel pipes that are falling apart, and so they're, they're leaching raw sewage. Some of them are under the Halifax.
Yeah, I can, I'd be happy to share with you the inventory of what we've got, which is all PVC type of pipe, I don't, I can't, I'd be happy to find out a little bit more. Of course, the new infrastructure that we're putting in place is all, is all PVC that will be going, you know, that will be connecting and, and coming down into this area. You know, we, we hear a lot about the, the types of pipe specifically in Fort Lauderdale, South Florida, a lot of, a lot of great concern of, of that type of infrastructure that's 50, 60, 70 years old, having, having that impact. Our utility in comparison is relatively young in that, in those terms. And the new infrastructure that'll be going in place will all be PVC, right, I mean, that's, yeah.
Good, I, I knew that was the case for the county, I don't know what the case is for the municipalities and their infrastructure.
We'll certainly get you some more information with regards to that.
Danny Robbins?
I'll make it real quick. Do we have any model county up here in Florida that we can look at that's enacted some of this stuff, you know, in low impact development, whether it be in their comp plan or developmental plan? It doesn't have to be answered now, it's a big kind of wide open question. And if so, you know, why, and then why not? So we can give people the whole spectrum of things, whether it be state control, the Burt Harris Act, costs. And then what challenges would we be facing, an actual cost behind it, whether it be a transition, legal challenges, et cetera? But just to, to reiterate what Billy said, you know, you guys are doing a great job. I, I think, you know, we're definitely tackling this on the Volusia County end. It's how do we battle this regional or state, you know, issue that we all share? I don't know if there's a right answer, but we appreciate your, I, I appreciate you and thank you.
Yeah, I did have one other thing. Gemini Springs, you know, your comments saying, well, you're not even sure if they test anymore. What will it take to get that back to where it should be? I know that looks unsurmountable, but you know, talking about it next year, it's still gonna be unsurmountable, you know, and, and I just hate to see a beautiful body of water like that. So where do you, where do we go with that?
So a couple of things, we do test the water at Gemini Springs monthly, but we don't test for bacteria, because that is a Department of Health requirement.
Right.
So, but we are testing for nutrients and, and other parameters there on a monthly basis. And that, again, has been going on forever. In terms of swimming, it would require regular Department of Health monitoring. In terms of swimming, it would require regular Department of Health monitoring for the, those contaminants. And, and what had happened in the past, so it closed in 2000 to swimming, was that, you know, fairly regularly, but not every time, the bacteria count would be high. And then the Department of Health would have to close the swimming area, and then you have to test it, it would have to be low for a certain number of days, and you could open it back up, and then every day.
And what mainly was contributing to that?
So there's been speculation about whether that's human cause or, or wildlife cause. And a number of years ago, there was a study that pointed toward wildlife as the cause, birds in particular. And so, and, and that happens at, at our beaches too, right? You get that big gull population, right? You get bacteria testing back high. And there's not a whole lot we can do about that, you know? If birds are in the area, they're contributing. So what would be interesting to see is when the septic system remediation project happens, and it's immediately upstream in that spring shed, if we see a corresponding reduction in nutrients and potentially a corresponding reduction in bacteria. And we won't know that, of course, without testing, and so we'll have to work with our DOH partner to see if they're willing to test that.
Hold on a second, because nobody can hear you. We have people online. We're, we're going to have, we're going to have public participation again. If you'd like to speak, fill out one of these, and we'll, we'll be glad to give you time to speak. We have one other person who has a question, but you're welcome. Thank you, because, because nobody can hear you online.
And then Stetson University at one point had done some, some sampling to try to determine if there was human contribution into, in there. And there were some markers for some of the things that look human, like super lows and some others. But there hasn't necessarily been sustained testing on bacteria in the spring since it has been closed.
So we don't have any idea if it's better or worse?
That's correct.
Right.
That something should need a motion for, or?
No, I think it's.
Yeah, yeah. We do, before we break for lunch, we have one member of the public that would like to, to speak. Sir, if you want to speak too, just tell Carissa over there, I'm not trying to put you off. I just want people to be able to hear you. The one that I have right now is Suzanne Schiber.
We have water atrocities that have occurred within our state. I think that just assuming that regulations are always looking out is not a good presumption. For example, mining has breached an aquifer in another part of our state. And in the south portion of the state, FWC does spraying, which has been highly controversial with locals, with Lake Okeechobee. I won't go into what's going on everywhere else, but to say that we are better here in our county, I would certainly hope so than some of the other areas. I don't, that's not necessarily a good comparison. I want to be better than those areas, and I'm glad that we are. But how, how do we rank? I mean, there was nothing showing that really, other than saying that we are. But moving into another area, I didn't really hear too much about pipes until I heard about what's going on in new areas. I can tell you that speaking to utilities departments in cities, they will tell you they don't know in certain areas of the cities what the pipes are in the ground. They're so old that they don't know. So therefore, they're not really getting replaced, and when they have a break, that's when they find out. If I say a city's name that I spoke to recently, it's like I'm trying to spar with them, and I'm actually not, because utilities has been the best source of information for me personally in talking to them. Their employees really care. I have not spoken to county concerning this, so with all fairness, that is the case. But I can tell you that the City of Daytona Beach Utilities, for example, and I've heard this from other cities as well, they literally are waiting for something to happen, because no one wants to go and replace the pipes ahead of time. So therefore, they're reactive, waiting until the break happens. I don't know that we could do that with a car. I mean, some people might, but you, you can't really always do that. So in Save the Lagoon Academy and Save the Springs Academy, which I took both, there was a professor in Save the Lagoon Academy who let us all know that we are decades behind, and he actually ran a slideshow showing us in the state of Florida with concurrency. The pipes in the ground are one of the main issues in the state, and in some areas, obviously, other things like wastewater treatment plants and, and so on. But when, when they teach this, at times I wonder, there seems to be a disconnect in what they're teaching and what happens. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Yes, I don't know, can you?
I can, actually. Volusia County has all of our infrastructure on our GIS map by type and size. Regarding the cities, obviously, we don't have much of a say in what they do, but House Bill 53 that was passed last summer requires a, for stormwater infrastructure and sanitary sewer infrastructure, requires a needs assessment that includes an accounting of all the material and the pipe that they have in the ground, plus a 20-year look ahead. Part of that bill requires that the cities do that. We've already met with them once, they, the state just recently released the sanitary sewer template for that. We will be meeting with them again, and then they will have to submit their needs analysis and their assessment to us to compile. They're going to do it on their own, but they sent it to us to compile all 16 municipalities and utility providers, and then we will send that to the state. So that would be a good look at what all the cities, if they complete it, I'm not, I mean, they're supposed to, we're, it's not our, I've asked that question specifically of the state regularly, it's not our place to require them to do it. But if they submit it to us and we submit, the state that should present an accounting of stormwater and sanitary sewer infrastructure for every utility provider in the, in the state.
By when?
June of this year.
Okay. That's, that's good to, to hear. Heather Post?
So Ben, this is, this is part of the discussion, I think, that we were having about really looking at everything on, and I say regional level, but really looking at everything in totality. And there are many things that we discuss on council where we say, well, you know, we're only responsible for county side, but we have 16 municipalities, and we, we, we consistently have discussion about working together. But what I would like to know is it's, it's much easier to work together and work towards an ends to a mean if we know those kinds of things, right? So if we know that, hey, this city or all of the cities really need assistance in determining what their pipes are made of and, you know, where the vulnerabilities are, that's a huge thing for us to know, to really sort of push that collaboration. Because in the end, in the end game, it's the best for all of us, and that's really, I think, we really need to be having a lot of, more of those tough discussions and standing firm and, and really coming up with a game plan. And so what I would like to see, I know Ginger, you had talked about providing quite a bit more information in terms of this relative to low-impact development, but what I would also like to see, and I would definitely like to talk with staff more on, is that kind of information from around the county, because you see it, you know it, we just need you to say it. And whether it's on the, you know, whether it's in our meetings or in staff meetings with us, we need that information, because we need to know exactly where we stand and where we can help. So I'd like to see more of that kind of information, just from a county standpoint, fully, and just have everything laid out on the table to where we can really address it.
Yeah, that's, that's my big concern, is that we'll spend hundreds of millions of dollars in the state of Florida to move from septic to sewer and go to plants that aren't capable. They all say, you know, we have the capacity, and they have the capacity, but that they have the infrastructure underground that nobody can see, that, that we're not just spilling raw sewage into the Skeeter Lagoon or wherever it is. We have, Glenn, you're still good for after lunch? Kelly, are you after lunch or before, after lunch? William from DeBarry, please come on down and, and we'll, we'll close out this section with you.
Thank God I got here just in time. You brought up DeBarry, my, my major issue. I'm here to defend the defenseless environment. Everybody knows that the environment's in big trouble due to our actions and inactions. I haven't prepared anything. I've been putting that off like I do with everything. I see the timer, it won't take me any longer than that. I live at 12 DeBarry Drive, it's exactly one mile north of Gemini Springs. That's why I said, God and my timing, it's called synchronicity, Carl Jung called, termed it. And it happens a lot, into a freaky amount, just like Einstein said. I heard from, Einstein said that the, the universe is too, too symmetrical or something like that to be just random. Anyway, they, it's, it's, the City of DeBarry puts out a newsletter, a monthly newsletter. I believe it was late last year, on the front page, they say the number one cause of pollution of Gemini Springs and of course downstream from there is runoff, fertilizer runoff. And that's the number one reason. And I have a natural Florida yard, I was a University of Florida certified natural master gardener. I have more than 20 different volunteer activities I've been involved in in the county. And, and so, you know, we should do what we can while we're here. We should do, make our lives worth something. Leave, leave, make the world a little bit better if we can. And my God, has anybody seen the pictures of manatee coming out of the water trying to feed off the, the banks? If you don't, if that doesn't break your heart, then you don't have one. And we can do something about that. And, and guess what the City of DeBarry does? I, I have a natural native plants in my yard. The City of DeBarry didn't like it. She actually told me, if you remove this, it's Alba's, Alba's, this Spanish needle, little daisies, beautiful, I love them. The bees love them. The bees are going away bye-bye too, because of what we do. What do we do when, when they're gone? We can stop that. We can allow native yards. We should require new construction to have, like they do in Holland, who, who first founded Manhattan 500 years ago or something. The Holland requires any commercial operation to have flowers. So why not require any new construction? Not, not clear cut it and put a couple of trees on, but leave it native. My God, it's, people just, they, they think it's, they, they call it a neighborhood improvement, and, and it's not improving the neighborhood when you kill all the wildlife. Where are all the birds? So I guess that's all the time I have, right?
Yes, thank.
A little later, if I think of something else?
Sure, you can. Thank you very much for, that's a good, good wrap-up. And as a fellow Gator, I'm alluding to football, not water. Just wait till next year. Anyway, so we'll, we'll break for lunch. How long do you want? Half hour, 45 minutes, two hours?
Two hours.
I'm here 45 minutes, so it's, it's 1 o'clock. Yeah, how long do you need? 45 minutes is plenty for you, Dr., okay. 1:45, we'll be back. Please come back for this really important conclusion. We'll start retroactively three minutes ago. We have two afternoon speakers. The, the first will be Attorney Glenn Storch, who I invited at the last council meeting, and he's, I under, you have some, did you bring some slides?
I did.
Okay. So we will let him go first as a representative of the development community, and then Dr. Pierce Jones will follow up and show how this is beneficial to the development community and to us as residents, to the water, and so please.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for asking me to come, and I, I really have enjoyed it, because it brings back memories of so many things that we've been working on for the past 20 years. I'm a big believer in public-private partnerships, in working together, in, in the development community, working with the environmental community. And to be honest with you, when we were doing the environmental minimum standards 20 years ago, whatever it was, we did that, and we were able to accomplish that because we were able to work together. Because on that board, you had people from the development side, you had people from the environmental side, you had people from all the farm side, everybody. And what we did is we're creating, we created a consensus. We worked together, we figured out what the problem was, created what the consensus was. And by the way, one of those was the Indian River Lagoon, 30-foot natural vegetation. And then we took it to the council, and because of the fact that all the communities had worked together, there was no opposition. And the council passed every single one of those minimum standards. And that's how we got the minimum standards in the first place, which, by the way, as you heard, doesn't happen anywhere else. We were very fortunate that our charter allowed us to do that and to do this. So let me start with this, though. This is one of the projects, especially hearing what you're talking about today, because one of my biggest concern is the Indian River Lagoon. And when we were doing a project in Edgewater called Dering Park North, we worked with the city, and because there was an issue with, I guess that doesn't work. I pushed that one. Ah. So there was an issue that they came up with, that they had, they were dumping effluent into the Indian River Lagoon. They were permitted to this, this is, this is wet season discharge, but they were doing, it was, and it was, you know, water that we were talking about just a few minutes ago, that had, that had been, gone through their system, but it was still effluent. And so they were dumping, I think, they had, they were permitted to dump an average of 800,000 gallons a day in the Indian River Lagoon. And they're still permitted to do that, because they have no place to put it. So you can see this, the, the charts, some days they were permitting, they were dumping 1.2 and 1.3 million gallons of effluent per day. There, the nutrient load may be reduced, because it's been treated, but there is still some nutrient load. And so one of their goals was, how do we get rid of that? And so we came up with an idea, and it was an idea that we worked together on, this was the, again, this was the community that I'm working together with, Formton, I'm sorry, Formton North LOC and the City of Edgewater. And so when we were doing this, we were doing our plan for Dering Park North, but you see those areas to the left? Those areas to the left are all uplands. Those are uplands that we weren't going to be using for anything. And it occurred to us that this could be something that you could use for a wetland park, that you could basically return those into wetlands, take your effluent and then pipe it into those areas, which cleans the entire area and takes it out of the Indian River Lagoon. This is not a new idea. This is something that's been done a number of times throughout the state of Florida. Here's one in Pasco County that they did, here's one in Ocala that they did, Wetland Recharge Park. Here's one in Orlando they did, Orlando Wetlands Park. And as you can see, there's trails throughout it, and there's walking trails, and, and it's just, it's a, it's one of those things that's a dual use. You're accomplishing a goal, but at the same time, you're also providing a park, you're providing bike trails, you're providing all these things. There's one in Gainesville as well, that's incredibly popular now. But the important thing is it takes and, and cleans the effluent. And that's what we're trying to accomplish right now. And, and I will tell you that getting the grant money, although we're providing the land, getting the grant money to do this is not exactly easy. the grant money to do this is not exactly easy. St. John's had a 25% grant that they were looking at, but you had to have a 75% match for that. And so we're going to be shopping that. We're going to be working together and I've already talked to Ginger about this. So we're hoping that this may be the sort of thing, this is a big project and a big idea and a, and a big accomplishment. It's one of the things we can all work together on. Again, it's public-private. So that's one thing. Second, as to low-impact development. The chairman asked me about that the other day. I don't know. I didn't know what it really was. And so I've been talking to people and I really appreciate that and I've been educating myself. Many of these are fairly common sense ideas. It's a smorgasbord of different things. And the, some of those ideas, we're already using now. We used, in fact, I suspect that when Dr. Jones gave us advice on the Farmington Local Plan, what, years ago, we incorporated those into the Farmington Local Plan. That's why Clay indicated that the low-impact development projects or procedures are in Farmington. That's probably where it came from. At the same time, we've learned from that. And I have a number of projects that we have incorporated a number of these things in. And as I've been told, it's not for every single project. You don't put everything in the same project. You take the project and you look at the things, your tools and your toolbox, and you look at how you can work together to accomplish those goals. And they're right. If you do it the right way, there's a potential of actually lowering costs and increasing, and creating a better aesthetic. So, as well as a better ecosystem. So these are things that we can work together on and, and I want to say that's, that's the key. The key is the development community, the environmental community, everyone working together to take it, figure out what the issue is, figure out the problem is, and figure out ways to solve the problem in an environmentally friendly manner, but without breaking the bank. So that's it for me. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the vice chair, Gertman, Heather Post, myself, Billy, Danny, had the pleasure of going to, I think it was in Sebastian, to a LID conference put on by the Marine Resource Council. And we were so impressed by the next speaker, Dr. Pierce Jones. I was able to spend some time with him during breaks and he just impressed all of us. That's why he's here today. Ben, I'm going to let you introduce him, but it's a, it's a real pleasure and an honor to have him join us today.
Absolutely. Dr. Pierce Jones is the program director for University of Florida's Program for Resource-Efficient Communities. Dr. Jones administers the coordination, development, and delivery of educational programs on best management practices in the built environment. His experience and research focus includes green building principles and practices, energy-efficient residential design and construction, indoor environmental quality and HVAC issues, and disaster mitigation through durable construction. We're happy to have him here to speak today on low-impact development.
So thank you all very much, commissioners. I appreciate it. It's not often that a person my age actually gets people to give you time to talk to them. I'm 75 years old, so I'm about done, about done. But I did want to say that there's one issue I gotta, gotta take exception to. Generally, I prefer under-promise, over-deliver. You have really set me up today. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure I like it. One other thing, I've got my cellphone here and the reason is, with this new case on it, I can't turn it off. And whenever it rings, even on silent mode, it rings in my hearing aids. And so I have to be able to hit the button if somebody calls. So I'm not, it's not that I'm fascinated with my phone, it's just that there's a practical issue at hand.
So if you go too long, do you want me to call you?
That's, that's a, you, you, I'm, you can definitely get in touch with me. So just to reiterate, our goal with the Program for Resource-Efficient Communities is to work with master plan communities on adoption of design, construction, management practices that reduce environmental degradation and make more efficient use of energy, water, and other natural resources. So that's just a simple statement of what we're trying to do. But the key issue there is that we work with master plan developers. The context for this presentation and for this meeting is water quality. Some of my first experiences with it were when there was a blue-green algae bloom in the Indian River, or not the Indian River, in the St. John's River. Actually, this, those shots are all from the Jacksonville area. But I happened to be in Jacksonville when that was happening and driving across some of the bridges early in the morning. It was actually, that blue-green color was actually quite lovely. Later, when the fish start dying and so forth, it's not as pretty. One of the things that I immediately looked into was what kind of, knowing that it was pollutant loading, nutrient pollutant loading that was probably responsible for those algae blooms. I went back to data from F-Dax and just found this information about four counties along the St. John's River. Those two columns of numbers are the tons per year of fertilizer that were applied during the year 2005. On the left is agricultural fertilizer use. And so as you might expect, St. John's County, where we grow so many potatoes and cabbage and other agricultural goods, they use a lot of fertilizer in St. John's County and Hastings area predominantly, which unfortunately is very close to the St. John's River. So that might have been part of the issue. But on the other side is Duval County, 23, just more in fact than St. John's County. That's not agricultural. So that's the transition to our single-family detached residential master plan communities and our turf grass dominant landscapes. It's also other things like golf courses, but that's what's going on. So there's, there's one of the hints as to where we might want to go. Not long after that, 2006, were the first TMDLs on the St. John's, I think, in that timeframe. And then when I saw that, I went to St. John's County and looked at their future land use map and saw, you know, what was already entitled and permitted. And at that point in St. John's County alone, which was that agricultural user of fertilizers, they had 80,000 homes on the books to be built. So what that told me was we better be looking at how we're building these communities and start thinking about how fertilizer is being used in those communities if we want to stop these algal blooms. Well, that was 2005, 2006 timeframe. Well, fast forward to 2018, and this is South Florida. Now, this is maybe more agricultural because it's probably coming more from Lake Okeechobee and, and that system. But nevertheless, we have persistent extreme water quality problems happening all over the state for a variety of reasons, but most of which can be traced back to fertilizer and also to septic tanks. Because, you know, there's, that's the triad. There's septic tanks, agricultural fertilizer, residential fertilizer. So I began trying to work with land developers to convince them of thinking about their landscaping in a different way. And first I had to understand the process of how land developers do their work. And one of the things that fascinated me, I was interested in working with the larger master plan community developers. And one of the things that fascinated me was how all of the preparation that goes into a project, as Glenn Storch referred to, all the work that has gone into, I mean, literally 10, 15 years ago, preparations were being made for what they're doing at Farmington today. And so there's this pre-planning that goes on. And what surprised me is that this particular project that I'm showing Oakland Park, this is something called a pattern book. If you've ever seen one, they're pretty interesting. The pattern book was put together by the developer. And it, the maps that I'm showing you, they're, they're straight out of this document. And the document's really pretty, very colorful, and if you're the community that's being approached with this plan, you absolutely see good property values and good tax revenues and, you know, it looks like a really great idea. And of course, it's meant to do that. Interestingly, these pattern books aren't just for commissioners and staff and other people, it's also for investors. As most of the residential master plan community developers I work with only put a small fraction of their own money into these projects, they basically leverage money that comes from other sources. Prior to 2009, 2010, it was a very good bet. You could expect to get a good rate of return. So insurance companies and CalPERS, retirement funds were typical investors in Florida land development. So that's a little bit peripheral, but not really. You, you, because you do want these low-risk, high-yield projects, that's what makes them go. So that's one example. And of course, I'm showing you this kind of conceptual plan of the layout on Lake Apopka. That's, of course, each one of those neighborhoods is going to be priced a little bit differently. Closer to the water, you pay more, maybe better view shed, you pay more for the lots. And that's what the developer's thinking, is how to maximize profit on that piece of land for the number of dwelling units that they're going to be allowed to build. But they go much further than that. They'll, they'll go all the way down to describing exactly what kind of plant materials, how much turf, how much ground cover in the front yard, the side yard, the alley yard, and that's all just for Oakland Avenue in this project of several thousand homes. So I can open the document and I can show you all the other proposed plans for all of the other segments of the community. So it's a very detailed document, including a plant list of what kind of plant materials, because that's all going to be encoded and embedded in the HOA documents and the land requirements that they have, all of which have to then be consistent with whatever the political jurisdiction requires. But once the project is funded and approved, then the real work starts. And it starts with today, conventional practice, totally clear the site. The upper left-hand corner of this slide, this happens to be on LPGA Boulevard. I played a lot of tennis out there, Tennis Center, and so I was always watching these projects. Every year I'd come over and I'd see what kind of, what had changed on LPGA Boulevard. The others are not from that site, but on the right, that's when the contour mapping has occurred and the grading, the mass grading of the site occurs. And then on the lower left, where did the fill come from to get you out of the floodplain? Well, it came from what's going to become your stormwater basin or what the residents, the community will call the lake. And then you build, use that fill to build up your roadways in your residential areas and then you connect the two with your hard pipe, stormwater drain there. You notice that on the left of those two lower slides is the, those are the wetlands. Those are the areas you couldn't build in, jurisdictional wetlands. So once the developer gets to that point, they've got all of the horizontal infrastructure in place, the sidewalks, the, not septic tanks, the wastewater and the water lines and so forth and the roads, then they're ready to sell those lots to the builders. And then the builders buy the groups of lots and build, start building their homes. And they bring in more fill. And you'll notice that that fill, the color of that soil is, this is very sterile stuff. It's probably dredged from depth to be brought here to the site. And then it's graded out, again, to make the water flow from the, away from the house to the street. And once that construction is done, you, one of the very last things is to put down the turf landscape, which is the least expensive colorful addition that you can make. That turf is sitting on material that turns that into effectively a hydroponic system. That turf will not live if you don't fertilize it and water it. And if you insist on having just St. Augustine Floratam or Empire Zoysia, you've got herbicide in it. And so that's what you have set up. Now, start irrigating it and not everybody, I'm not saying they're irresponsible, but I mean, you know, irrigation systems are not precise. So lots of water comes off those landscapes into the streets and then into the gutter and into the drain and finds its way, its way into the stormwater basins. If you, the reason that you have your summertime fertilizer ban is that if you've just irrigated like that and then that one-inch summer rain comes along, you can flush that fertilizer into the street and into the drain. It just exacerbates the problem. I mean, that's, that's the logic. You don't give homeowners a choice. This poor man happened to live in Pasco County in the town unfortunately named Bayonet Point. And he went to jail because he had a brown lawn. Now, that wasn't why he was put in jail. He was put in jail because he didn't show up for court appearance and so it was contempt. But his neighbors heard about it and they tried to help him out and they came and they re-statted his lawn. That was in October 2008 when we were in the midst of an extreme drought in the state of Florida. And at that point in time, in fact, SWIPMUD, the Water Management District in that area, did not even allow for watering in your turf landscape because the water situation was that extreme in Tampa Bay region. And yet, he was under the gun or go to jail. And so this is, the absurdity of this is, you know, is unbelievable. So anyway, key factors impacting water quality in this process. Mass clearing and grading. That's, if you do that and you disrupt the soil totally and you don't replenish the soil, you're going to have landscapes that have to be cared for if you insist on them being green and so forth, you're going to end up using fertilizers and irrigation and pesticides. Compacted soils, that exacerbates the problem. Impervious surfaces, of course, that's the source of the water flowing into the streets and so forth. And then the most important in my view, and that's persistent nutrient loading. It's persistently, year over year, several times a year, adding fertilizer to that landscape. So that little sequence of slides there basically goes through those, those impacts that you have when you build one of these communities. So you, one of you earlier mentioned that you and staff might want to think outside the box a little bit. I think that was you, Commissioner Wheeler. I want to go backwards a little bit in time and talk about Dearing Park North before it was Dearing Park North. In prior times, it was called Restoration. And it was a community that was entitled in the city of Edgewater. And the first plan that they offered was in 2006 for that project and I became shortly thereafter, involved with that project shortly thereafter. It's 5,200 acres, all in the city of Edgewater. You can see the location next to I-95. It went through a series of designs, but in all cases, the designs, it was entitled for 8,500 dwelling units and all designs had 8,500 dwelling units. It was entitled in 2009, so there was finally an approved plan. At the end, with that final plan, it had become a mixed-use transit-oriented community with three and a half million square feet of commercial space. A lot of mixed use, a lot of keeping people in the community to do their shopping and so forth instead of getting out on I-95 and going up New Smyrna for their, to get to Publix. So that was kind of the arc of what happened with this project, but you'll, you all recall 2009. We refer to that now as the Great Recession. And 2009, this project, like many others, it didn't survive. But nevertheless, what this process did for me as an academic, I mean, I didn't go bankrupt. I worked for the state of Florida, so I didn't go bankrupt. I still got my paycheck. Was that rude to say that? No, actually, I'm telling you, you know, you don't have to trust me because I can say whatever I want. I'm still getting my paycheck. But I had two designs now. I had the 2006 original design that was proposed and then I had this one from 2009 that they had engaged us, and I'll explain that. Restoration, we were able to then do some comparisons on their roadway. So for example, here was the 2006 design. Now, you can look at that and remember that off to the left, I believe that's Spruce Creek Watershed down in Edgewater, yeah? So that's an outstanding Florida water. And these folks were going to come in and they were going to find every bit of upland and they were going to put their houses, slather the houses all over all the upland throughout the site. And just knowing that folks who sit in the roles that you all are in now have an impact, the developer got nervous about this design because the East Center Florida Regional Planning Council, evidently there were a couple of votes that were going to come against this plan. And so they pulled plan. They didn't want a single vote against this because then, when it got to Booja County, that would mobilize the opposition. And they were worried. It was risky. And so I was called in as an advisor to them at this point, what can we do with this plan? And I looked at it and I'm not a planner. And I looked at it and I'm not a planner, and I'm not, and I'm not, I'm going to contradict Commissioner Brower, I'm not an LID expert, but I'm a reasonably logical person. And I looked at it and I said, if that's, if they're worried about wetland impacts and whatnot, why don't you snug up to I-95? That's all I said, honestly. That was the extent of my technical analysis of that look, of that design. And, and they did. And you'll see that design in just a moment. But this design that I just showed you, I was able to go back and do a network analysis of, of the roadways and the distances to exit the community, to get to shopping, and then turn to schools and other things in the community. And we could do an analysis of, of travel in that community, but we, most importantly, we could lay out all the roadways. And we could put a cost on all of that. And so this is the analysis. We're not going to go through it in any detail, but you can see six lane divided, four lane divided. So this is just the analysis of all the highways. So, so here's the second design that they came up with based on what I recommended. And that's the snugged-up I-95 design. Now, the big thing that changed is the golf course is gone. The Del Webb community, the senior 55 and older Del Webb community is gone. They've snugged up. And what you all just saw from Glenn Storch, the reason that that idea that he just proposed is possible is because this is the design that was adopted. And when Deering Park North bought this property, that was kind of in place. And so for them to have that entitlement, they kind of accepted that. So that's what set up that opportunity for that wetland park, interestingly enough. Now, they've changed the design of the community itself, but back to the point, the roadways in this system, I can do that same network analysis. Well, now let's just compare the two. We look at the older sprawling plan, and it was 72 miles of roadway versus 39 miles of roadway. It was 186 lane miles of roadway versus 103 lane miles of roadway. Impervious surface area dropped from 17 million square feet to 10 million square feet. That's good, right, LID? Landscaped area dropped from 6 million to 3 million. That's the verges and the medians and all that. That did, you know, that's going to be, the community's going to be responsible to maintain. And if it's turf grass, they're going to have to fertilize, maybe irrigate, or if it's beha, maybe not. But nevertheless, both of those are good LID practices. The reason I show you this, though, is because the reduction in the cost of the roadways alone, of just the reduction, not the total roadway, was $145 million. The property only cost the developer $120 million. So, and why would a developer do something like that? You just ask yourself, you think, 8,500 homes, you know, how are you going to pay? No, it seems like that's bottom line stuff. Well, no, because it was a CDD. And so that burden was going to be put on the homeowners as a supplemental tax as part of their CDD. So they weren't particularly sensitive. The developer, their, their bottom line is not being especially badly impacted, unless homeowners were smart enough to realize, geez, I don't want that tax burden for the next 30 years to pay for those extra roadways. So, anyway, I'm just trying to get into the, the way that the thinking goes. And I can do the same kind of an analysis. This is the four major practices that we do in landscapes. We mow, we fertilize, we pesticide, and we irrigate. And we've done an analysis with what the University of Florida recommends, how frequently you should mow, for example. And we calculated, well, how much gas do those mowers combust? How much CO2 does that generate? And then we looked at fertilizer. Well, if you make ammonium nitrate fertilizer and use natural gas, how much CO2 do you have to generate in order to generate that fertilizer for that landscape over the course of a year? Same thing with pesticides, and then irrigation, surprisingly. But you just heard, all of these pumping of water and waste, I mean, there's a lot of pumping, there's a lot of energy that goes into delivering water to developments and then to treat the water and everything. So we have a cost associated with the water that's in the irrigation. Though this is all on a per thousand square foot per year basis, is what those numbers are. But they just give you the relative impacts of the different practices. And you can see fertilizer's pretty high, surprisingly, water's pretty high, too. Take those numbers, go back to Restoration, consider the new design, the much more compact design, that resulted in much smaller lots. So the largest lots in that design at that time, not in Deering Park North, but in the Restoration project, were only 60 feet wide, which is still pretty wide, but it's, it's narrowed by older standards. And compact homes with greatly reduced landscapable area became much more likely, elimination of turf, and therefore, high-volume irrigation became possible. And less than 25% of the residences were estimated to require any turf landscape at all. Therefore, irrigation demand just dropped off a cliff. And the design that you see there, that came from Cannon and Associates. That's the planner. That's not university stuff. That's the real guy that does the planning and does the architectural design of homes in communities like this. This isn't university stuff. This is just practitioner stuff. Well, if you then go compare those two communities again, those much, that much more compact design, you have, you've cut the landscapable area in half. Correspondingly, pesticide use is, is cut tremendously. Fertilizer is cut from 135,000 pounds per year to 18,000 pounds per year, when you went to that more compact design. Mowing, 33,000 gallons per year versus 4,000 gallons per year. Irrigation, a billion gallons a year versus 63 million gallons per year. So tremendous change by going to compact design. By the way, landscape maintenance costs, we estimate, reduced by $4 million. Where does that money go? Back into the pocket of the homeowner who didn't have to pay it. Back into the pocket of the homeowner that didn't have to pay the $145 million for the extra roadways they didn't need for the sprawling community. I can show you the same thing on the cost of transportation. And that money was gasoline dollars saved by homeowners back in their pocket. Now, what was the logic to the developer? Do you want to have a home where people have sufficient money in their pocket that they pay their mortgage? Or do you want them to have to drive further every day? You want them to, you know, pay for roads that they didn't really need? And so, anyway, that's the logic, and that's the out-of-the-box thinking, and that's back to what Dr. Anderson said. Developers can see, if they're given room to think, I think they can figure out that there are some big benefits to moving in this kind of a direction. Unfortunately, that project went bankrupt. Fortunately, Deering Park now has it, and we're going to see what they'll do. But I, they will, all of the land, the preserved land is intact, and the water park that Mr. Storch talked about, I think that's a great addition to that. Now, there are some of these practices that I'm talking about that are much more specific to landscapes, that are starting to pop up. And here, I'm going to show you two examples, one a small project example, and then a big project example. In Gainesville, Elatua County, they have a neighborhood cottages allowance, and it's for a density, if you do certain things, for these small, small homes. And this project, the 80th Street cottages project, it was initially intended to be 20, it's on 3.5 acres, 27 units. They could have gotten 31 on there, but they went with 27 to allow for additional parking. But this is a little bit of getting to affordable housing as well. That's a benefit of this. But I had had an interaction with the person that was the developer of this project, and I had found that the water use in his prior community was the highest of any residential community in Gainesville, in Elatua County. And I said, I told him that. And, and he said, well, how can that be? And we talked a while, and he said, you know, it's funny you say that, because the biggest complaint I get about the houses we build, it's not the home, it's not the energy bill, it's the water bill. People will call and complain about the water bill. So anyway, he was very open to a discussion. And one of the things we recommended for him on this project was to repair the soil. And so you can see in the, in the area that's going to be the calm and the green, that's compost that they put down to get some organic matter, but most important, the biology, the microbial biology back into the soil prior to putting down the landscaping. They did the same thing in front of the houses, and you can see the mulch in the lower right-hand corner there with some of the shrubs. But he made another decision, and that was, these are small, you can look across the way there, and you can see the size of the little front yards. He said, you don't need an irrigation system for this. We've got a hose bib. We've got a hose bib. Sprinkle it if you want water on it. So he didn't put an irrigation system. So he, he actually, and that saved him something like $1,200 per unit. I was amazed. Look at those little tiny units and think about how much, but for a controller and technician and so forth. So these 3.8 acres, 27 units, no individual irrigation system, compost, amended landscapes. That center of green is irrigated from a well, but he was, it's, it's now rental units and the owner has an vested interest in not spending more money on pumping water than needed. So they actually put a meter on that well, and we've actually got the data. We know exactly what they're using. I can tell you that those homes, we've gotten our first bit of data from them, and they're using about a third of what a conventional, single-family detached home uses. They're using right at 120 gallons per day on average. Now, that same guy who did that development for Robyn Shore spun off, became his own little company. This is a person I'd been challenging. His next little interim project, he repeated the process, and he did cottages on the avenue. It's only 13 units, but notice that he made a little bit of a shift. You see that he's using the rock area. Again, none of the homes have an individual irrigation system. There is a strip along the street that is irrigated. Again, these are rental units, so they have an incentive to keep that cost down. And that is, by the way, beha, the beha and the other one as well. In the backyard, they went even further. You can see in the lower left there, they've got the little patio area, they've got that rock area over there, and that green area, that's astroturf. And so he has gone all out to quit using water, get it down and get it under control. And he's now finished that project. You can see him in the upper left-hand corner, they're just finishing that up. And is it financially working out? Are people rejecting these because of those rocks? Now, I looked at the website yesterday, and this is what it says. And these homes were being finished last month, and it's fully leased. They're gone. So financially, they're doing great with this product. And he now has just broken ground on his next project, which is 173 units, following exactly the same pattern, no irrigation for 173 units. So this is a profit-making venture for him. Big projects, Sunbridge. Sunbridge is in Osceola County. You can see the Orlando International Airport in the upper left. You can see Sunbridge, it's massive, 27,000 acres. And that's the first part of Deseret Ranch, which is, you know, more than 100,000 additional acres. If this goes well, then Tabastock, who is the developer, will be continuing to develop the Deseret property. So, there's a lot riding on this for Tabastock, the developer. And the entrance to the project comes down Cyril's Drive. And when you enter the project, the very first thing you see is the public facility called Base Camp. And this is the greeting center. It's not a sales center as much as it is, it's going to become a community center later, but currently, it's meant to, you know, do the marketing, the big, the high level, not the home, but the community itself, marketing. And their theme is the eco-life. The eco-life. Okay, what does that mean? Well, anyway, I'm not a marketer, so I don't really know what it means. But, but, anyway, Base Camp. So, so what are we doing with them? Well, number one, they understood this concept of the soil. And this is to the developer's credit, they, they bought into that. We took them on a tour. The upper left-hand corner is Life Soils production facility that is compost, it's in Sumter County where Wildwood, you know, Parkway and I-75 split. So that's where they're located, that's their major site. They've got others around the state, Life Soils does. And they were, their rationale, in fact, I apologize for this, but I want to go back and just show you one thing. Can you see in Sunbridge, right under the word Sunbridge, in Osceola County, you can see those faint outlines of lakes. There are three large, large, pristine lakes on this site. This is the absolute top of the Kissimmee River Basin watershed. There is nobody upstream. If those lakes go bad, they have nobody to blame but themselves. And that, and their partners, the Mormon Ranch, they have a very long view of the world. And they, and they anticipate this partnership going on. So, anyway, they have stewardship of those lakes is a critical business decision that they're making. And so some of these things that I'm showing you, that's what the motivation is. Well, one of the first things we said is, okay, fix the soil so you can avoid using fertilizers. So sure enough, they've contracted with Life Soils, and so that's the median strips on Cyril's Drive that you see there in the upper right. And that's them grading it in on the lower left, and that's what it looks like in the lower right. And so this is much more nutritious-looking soil before you put down your landscaping. Now, the Base Camp offered another opportunity to go a little further. You can kind of see that there's a parking area, and there are two yurts and an event lawn and some other things is what it is. But the bottom is Cyril's Drive. This is what that looked like, right there along Cyril's Drive at Base Camp, first time we went down there, about a year ago. And you can see, it's the typical operation. You totally clear the site, you grub the site, you burn the material, then you grade it out with the big equipment and compact everything. And then when you're done, it all looks really nice there in the lower right. That looks great, doesn't it? We were, we suggested that they might want to consider integrating native plant materials into their community that would be much more drought tolerant and require a lot less fertilizer. And you could advertise pollinators and birds and other things that, you know, are attracted to these native plant materials. So, how do we test that concept? Well, we proposed, why don't we do a boundary planting around Base Camp that will be right at the front of your community, and we can test those native plant materials out, and then if you're getting good results, you can recommend those to the builders for their home landscapes, for the residential landscapes. So, the area that you see there, that L-shaped, backward L shape, that was put in place, and we actually, this is actually a university research project. There are going to be three graduate students working on this project. We created 16 different experimental plots and planted the same mix of native plant materials in all of them, and we put different levels of the compost product in some, no compost product in others, a watering pattern in some that was as needed, and other standard biweekly, you know, whatever the typical pattern might be. So we're doing the comparison of water and soil amendment as a research project at the interest to their community. They're paying for one of those graduate students at the University of Central Florida in addition to paying for this landscape. So they're putting real money into this to find out what can work as a landscape practice in their community. And we had a group from University of Florida, University of Central Florida, landscape architects, Cannon and Associates, Cherry Lake is a major plant producer. And we put out all of the different native plant materials and went through them to choose which ones to use. And we chose the ones that maybe weren't being used as frequently, ones that were available, however, ones that were not priced out of, out of reason. So that's just an example of some of the plants that were, were considered. The planting actually went in, in January. And so this is very fresh information. You can see the plots being laid out there in the upper left. And the upper right, that's the plants that have been brought in and being ready to be planted in a very specific pattern to make sure that we got replication in all the different research cells. In the lower left, you see that's the command, that's the compost product. And in the lower right, that's the very freshly planted material, the blue flags indicating a pathway that will go through this, where we'll do public education. And this is a more, this one was planted in '21, and so it'll give you an idea, the lower right gives you a better idea of what it kind of looked like, or what it will look like. It's very attractive, does, very drought tolerant, very, lots of butterflies, lots of birds. So that's the So that's the Base Camp story. They went on then, of course, this is the big game. What do you do with these homes that are in Westland Park? That is their very first neighborhood. They've selected their five builders that include Pulte, Toll Brothers, David Weekley, Kraft. Big national builders. They're going to do 12 model homes in that first phase that you see shown. After we, this group that did the Base Camp boundary planting, we said to ourselves, well, maybe we ought to take the next step and start designing some landscapes for residences to kind of dangle it out there. And we proposed that we would actually build a pattern book of that kind of landscaping, just a generic one. It wasn't intended for this project. But when this project heard about it, they said, well, what about using our model home landscapes? And then we'll pitch it to the builders. And we said, sure, let's do it. So this is the group, this is how we come together. It's a group called the Outside Collaborative. It is an industry-led group. University of Florida just kind of hangs out to see what they're doing. But it's landscape architects, land developers. In fact, Ernie Cox has been very heavily involved with this. So I'm sure Glenn knows Ernie quite well. He's the one involved with your Farmington project. Anyway, this is the organization that organized that idea. And one of the inspirations for the idea, and I got to admit, I was pretty surprised. But there are people in the villages who are members of the Florida Native Plant Society, who don't like turf landscapes. And they went to the trouble to get permission from the HOAs in their respective portions of the villages to modify their landscapes. And the pictures you see are landscapes they've come up with. And we began doing tours of these and realizing how passionate people were and could personally see the butterflies and birds and so forth that made it more attractive or a better place to live potentially. So anyway, this was very useful when we were trying to convince the Tabistock Development Team. We took them up there to the villages and showed them this. And so that inspiration, plus the people from the Outside Collaborative that I mentioned, we came together and began developing designs. And we gave them the challenge in the design of these landscapes. Minimize, eliminate irrigation beyond establishment. Minimize, eliminate mineralized fertilizer use beyond establishment. Minimize, eliminate pesticides, pesticides, herbicides. Promote, maximize ecological diversity and ecosystem services. Now, this is not my graduate student. I mean, I was the one that wrote these. But these weren't my graduate students. These were people that own million-dollar-plus companies. This is Cherry Lake. This is Canaan and Associates. This is Dick's Height. This is Tabistock. Developer Blake Nona. That's my audience. And to their great credit, and by the way, the Nature Conservancy is also working very closely with us on this. Here's an example of the first two lots that they designed. And these are all native plant materials. These are two lots. These are two Pulte homes. These are the model homes that are going to be in Westland Park. Pulte has agreed to build these lots and landscape them this way. We'll see. I haven't seen it yet, but they've agreed to it. But if that's true, there's no turf on this landscape. There'll be no water for irrigation. There will be drip irrigation, but there will be no mass, heavy irrigation on that site. And so that's Westland Park. And of course, there are over 600 homes to be built there. If we have some success with the builders in their model homes, then we will design a less expensive version of those same landscapes that could be used in their other homes. And hopefully, they will be able to sell those for all the benefits. In contrast, is immediately across the street from Base Camp is Del Webb. This is a conventional Del Webb community. It is being built simultaneously with Westland Park. It's all St. Augustine. And it's pretty spare after you see those villages' landscapes. Now, I mean, I admit that's, you know, maybe an expense and so forth, but here's one thing I'd like to point out. Look at that picture in the lower right. And if you were worried about what might be happening in the natural areas that are off to the left of those buildings in that picture, that peninsula of land on which those homes are being built is five feet of fill. They had to raise the elevation by five feet. So all those Del Webb homes, including that lake that you see, it's lake. See, even I believe that a stormwater pond is a lake. That lake is perched above that area. So that peninsula with that perched stormwater basin. So any fertilizers that they use in their backyards that find their way into that, that are soluble, can find their way into those natural areas that are all around. And this is going to be the standard throughout this, because of the nature of the ground. This is going to be the standard that they're going to deal with as they build out this community. So I mean, to me, that's just a little ticking time bomb in terms of material leaching through and finding its way into the natural areas. So key practices, amend soils, minimize irrigation, eliminate fertilizers. Developers and builders, they're not averse to this, but there's a reason. I mean, it's not all, it's not all easy. Some of the local tools, and these are the things I think you all could potentially directly consider. This is in the Land Development Code in the city of St. Cloud. And it is based directly on the code from Osceola County. This is their efficiency program. Now, remember, you all are just outside of the Central Florida Water Conservation. You know that, I can't remember the name of it, but Compact. Say it again? It's the Central Florida, it's all, it's Lake, Seminole, Orange, Osceola, Pope Counties, because they've got the three water management districts. And they're trying to do strategic water planning and they're all going to get hit. And all the water utilities are going to get hit in their consumptive use permits. So they're all under pressure to make sure that they don't exceed their consumptive use permits because there's not going to be any more. They're hitting their limit on what they can withdraw. Belushi County is outside of that, so I don't know if you all aren't maybe as aware of it. But anyway, that's why St. Cloud and Osceola County, this is their response. So irrigated turf is prohibited from being installed in the rear yard for all new residential projects. So if you want to hook into the utility system, you're going to do Florida Water Star. And you're also going to not put any irrigated turf in your backyards. And landscaping cover that utilizes low-volume irrigation will be permitted. So drip, that's okay. Down at the bottom, it says, entrance landscaping and common areas of development shall install Florida-friendly landscaping that is drought tolerant. Irrigation in these areas will be limited to the use of low-volume irrigation, drip, stormwater, or subficial wells. So they're putting some real limits. And you know, the developers, go look at the city of St. Cloud and look in the southeast quadrant of that city. You're going to see loads of what we used to call DRIs, developments of regional impact, huge projects. They're not arguing about this because they understand that if they don't get the consumptive use, they're out of business. If they don't have any water, they're out of business. And they get it. So that's risk. They're avoiding risk. So I think that's a great opportunity. So he seemed a little shy about telling you what land application looked like. Let me show you what land application of biosolids looks like. First, you go to the water plant and see where they separate the solids from the water. And then when they've got it down to a certain level, they put it in the tanker trucks. And then they take it to the farm. And you spread it on the farm. You've got monitoring wells out there, so you're watching. But what happens? Well, the grass gets green, just like it does over the septic tank. And who likes that? Cattle. And if you like hamburgers, this is good for you. Because that's taking that nitrogen and putting it into beef and not putting it into the water. And that's what land application is supposed to be about. Unfortunately, as this has become more out of fashion, certainly in South Florida, lots and lots of those tanker trucks are heading up the road into Central Florida communities and doing land application. Not in Miami-Dade, not in Broward, not Palm Beach, but for the north and in the interior. And the same thing's happening in the city of Gainesville, Latchell County. They disallowed it. This was in Latchell County. This is GRU. They disallowed it. So now I think they're taking it over to Gilchrist County. Okay, great. Well, they got springs over in Gilchrist County, too. Well, so what are we going to do about this? St. John's River Water Management District is very concerned about it. There are major studies underway right now as to what we should be doing about this. On the one hand, farmers don't, farmers like this. This is good for crops. But if you get a less and less and less area, you put more and more biosolids on that smaller area, then you're exceeding the need. And generally, farmers put out enough for the nitrogen that they need. Unfortunately, they're getting a lot of phosphate. And so it's the phosphate loading from the biosolids that's the primary concern of the water management districts. What can we do about it? I'm taking you back to my EPA Class A, exceptional quality EQ, unrestricted use compost. I showed you this earlier. I want you to understand that that compost is used on Florida field, our football field. And now all of our athletic fields, our baseball fields, our soccer fields. That compost is being used by our landscapers because it really makes the grass green, makes the turf healthy. And it's an extremely, extremely, extremely slow release for what a little bit of nitrogen and phosphate that there is. And it's very, very slow release. And you spread it out over a much greater area. And they're finding this, uses for this in the commercial sector. You're familiar with Massey Services. You know who I'm talking about. If you have a termite problem, you call Massey. They're one of the people that can, like Terminex. They also do lawn care. They will now come and do top dressing with compost on your lawns. The place that's most successfully doing that, the villages. And we've got thousands of people in the villages that that's now a standard treatment of the landscapes. Summertime fertilizer ban, compost is not technically a fertilizer. It can be applied in the summertime. So there are some nice opportunities there, a good way to deal with biosolids. And addressing some of the other comments earlier, I don't know why I was thinking about this, but what do you think they do with reclaimed water on the space station? They drink it. So maybe we should stop thinking about our reclaimed water as something you've got to get rid of. I mean, I want Glenn Storch and his project and Edge Water to go forward. But clean that water up a little bit better and put it right back in the system. That's where we're headed. It's what they've been doing on the space station for years. Don't kid yourself. They are not sending any Dasani or Aquafina or anything up to the space station. So that's a little snarky. I apologize for that. But I was raised in Melbourne, Florida. I watched the space shots. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's funny. Right. I was raised in Melbourne, so I'm. But one other thing I want to mention, Hillsborough County is doing a fabulous job with compost production. They are diverting all of their biosolids into this. They're also diverting all of their yard waste into this. And they are making a profit. Their estimates that I saw is the last year, it was one and a quarter million dollars of reduced costs to the county to run this facility. That facility, though, did cost six million to create. But they're sufficiently happy with it. They are doubling its size. So this is biosolids to compost, compost to eliminate mineralized fertilizers in both existing landscapes, but also for making our landscapes better in new developments by fixing the soil before we put landscaping on it. I guess the conclusion is that that tree, which is right down the road from my house in Miconope, Florida, never been irrigated, never been fertilized, never been any pesticides used around. Native plants can grow quite well if we will give them soil and time and so forth. And so developers are amenable. They want to know the rules. But we can do a lot more than trying to make them pick between curb cuts and swales and will that offset? Can I reduce my volume here? But we can reduce some of that by just doing simple source control. I would only ask that you all consider ways that you could incentivize those first developers in your community. Treat it as a water conservation practice. Get the water utility involved. Or, you know, if you're the jurisdiction, or treat it as a nitrogen removal source. If they, you know, when they shrine in their documents that there shall be and the contracts with the landscape care companies are, you know, look for methods to do source control. Stop putting the fertilizer out. And so that's the simple message that I bring. Thank you.
Don't go away. That is worthy of applause. I think that another part of the population that we have to bring into this is just homeowners. Because for my entire lifetime, we have all been taught by Bayer, Monsanto, all the fertilizer companies that prestige in America is a 10,000-square-foot lawn that you spend every weekend mowing and fertilizing and applying herbicides, herbicides to. So we've got, I love these developments that we've looked at, but we've, you know, and people are choosing to live there. Not everybody will choose to live there. But we've, outside of making a law and forcing people to not have a lawn, we've, and this is where y'all come into a lot, and Kevin Captain. We've got to educate the public that this is really important to our future, for our water and for our quality of life, for the, to reduce the rates of cancer. And everything that we've seen is chemicals become more and more of a product of our landscape. So I think we have to, for me, this is a giant step forward in that regards, to get the public to look at it a little bit differently. I appreciate you talking so much about compost. As, I don't know if you know or not, I, in my other life, had, have a landscape design and maintenance company. We don't use fertilizers. And I use compost tea and compost. But one, and the reason I did that was not just because I, you know, that much for the environment, I am. But I've done hundreds and hundreds of soil tests. And what I find is that most of our soils are dead from acidulated petroleum-based fertilizers and all the chemicals that we spray on it to keep it insect, disease, and weed-free lawn. And compost has that benefit, that it adds life back to the soil. It retains water. So you have, you can, you can irrigate less. And also, if we were to do it on a county level, it would greatly reduce what we put in the landfills right now. So it has all kinds of benefits. I have a couple of questions. Barb Gertman, though. Go ahead.
I can't wait to hear your questions.
Well, it's not really a question. I want, it's clarification. When Wendy Anderson spoke, she mentioned, you know, don't go to high density. Anybody that looks at the restoration will look at the part where the houses are and says, oh, my gosh, that's really high density. But it's not. When you look at the entire property, we're moving that density to the part of the property where it makes sense and creating a tremendous green space. So we need to be careful the way that we describe that, too, and when those things come up. Wendy, just nod your head if, okay. I knew that's what you meant, but I wanted to point it out just because it's a little bit different. I keep saying we have to change the way that we develop. This is it. This is part of it. This is it, this is part of it. Oh, cost of growth. We have probably the best CEO in the state of Florida here. And one of the things that he said in budget season over and over again last year was that growth doesn't pay for itself. And one of my complaints is that a developer comes in and he puts all these roads in and hands us the bill, pave the road, maintain the roads, and this reduces that cost, too. If we can put in this much less roads in a development, road miles, then that's better for everybody, too. So there's just a lot of benefits to this. Barb Germain.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I continue to say we're evolving, right? When you know better, you work to do better. As a local Realtor, we know there's such a high demand on homes. People wanna move here. And for me, it appears that if we were to change, or the developers were to change to this model, it's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all, but it's like we have to rethink, re-educate, and retrain, right? I grew up where you needed a big green lawn, right? But my mom didn't fertilize it, just, you know, it was the conditions of the weather, right? So now, that's not where we need to go. That's where we've been. That's not where we need to be or go because it's not really sustainable for our environment and for our future. So I do think it's about the public-private relationship, partnership for where are we going for our future? And I know there's concerns with having higher density or smaller lots, but when you look at what our children and their children will want, it's not maintaining their lawns every weekend, right? So some of the models that you've shown to me would be attractive to a good population. It could also be a cost savings where values have gone up so much that if you're able to reduce some of the impact on costs and, you know, the amount that you're paying for water, but also the amount the developer is paying in investing in landscaping and irrigation and so forth, there may be some other cost-saving opportunities there. So I do think it can be a win-win with the right developers. And the developers where it's not a good match, maybe they're not a great partner for where we're going. So I appreciate everything you've presented. It's sensical, it makes sense, and I thank you for simplifying and just demonstrating a better way forward.
Thank you for that. Just a couple of items. On those two Pulte designs that I showed, and we actually have the designs for the other 10 homes, there are gonna be 12 models at Sunbridge. We've had the estimates on the maintenance cost of those landscapes. You look at them and say, "Oh, my goodness, all those unusual shapes and shrubs and mulching." All of those landscapes actually turned into no-mow landscapes. I didn't prescribe that in my original challenge to the designers, but that's what happened. When you eliminate the mowing machine, the cost to the homeowner, we've estimated it is dropping around $126 a month. And this is not, again, an academic exercise. This is a professional company, just Cherry Lake, and also Down to Earth, two companies that do that all the time. They've both given us estimates on the two styles of landscape, conventional versus this. And we've already, we have all the water data for Orange County and Osceola County, and we know what it costs to irrigate. On average, it will save $56 a month to the homeowner to go to that drip system away from a conventional system. So we're now up to $175 a month to the homeowner. So again, that doesn't necessarily impact bottom line for the developer unless the developer, the demand for their product, their lots becomes high, and therefore they can push the price of lots up a little bit. I mean, that's where they're gonna get their profit. Same thing with the builders. If the builders were to realize that if they could sell that feature, that savings, for example, or the butterflies, and, you know, there are different ways you could approach the audience, the homebuyer audience, but if they could sell that feature, then you could also treat that as an upgrade. So just like you asked for that granite countertop, you could ask for that enhanced landscape, but start thinking of it as the enhanced landscape. This is the landscape you want. Much back to your point, that, you know, we were led to believe that this is the style, but there were people that had a vested financial interest in us believing that. And so there's real money involved, real benefit to homes, obviously benefits to the environment, obviously benefits to work lawns, in my view, so.
Yeah, this is exactly what I was talking about, things out of the box. You know, these are the things that we don't know, you know? And to hear things like this, these new ideas, or maybe not new, but they're new to us, really helps us to think outside of the box. So, you know, we were talking about the enhanced landscaping. I always wanna think enhanced means an additional cost. But if that enhanced could mean a reduction in cost, and if that's out there advertised, you know, what benefit would that bring, you know, to a buyer or even the builder? Because if he's making money on establishing it and the buyer is saving money, you know, I think we have to change our way of thinking.
It's a marriage made in heaven, right?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. That's exactly the things that we're looking for.
You had mentioned in one of your pictures, there was, where you were doing plannings, you said it would be a demonstration or an educational garden for the residents that live there. I think she just left the room. I wanted to say something for Wendy Anderson, that... Who is on the Soil and Water Board, that would be a tremendous project for them. And a local businessman, Michael Panagio, has, is managing property out by a municipal stadium, has offered to let part of that land be used for just such a purpose, to plan a demonstration, low-water requirement garden. I thought I saw in some of your pictures, it doesn't look like it's 100% natives, which is fine. I'm not a native purist, but there are good plants that fit in well. Did I see some jasmine ground cover?
Was that in the... I think that was in the Villages slides. I think there was some jasmine in there. And that particular person, he just didn't want the... He didn't, he wasn't a member of the Native Plant Society, and so there are quite a few non-natives in his yard. But we have looked at all their water bills. All their water bills did go down substantially, and obviously there's no mowing going on, so they're... Of course, I don't know about their landscape care, I haven't actually polled them, but yes, we're not averse to... We would like to see if a native plant for the same price, same impact, can do the job, choose the native. If it's gonna cost you more, it won't do the job as well, as long as the other is not invasive, if it's a naturalized plant, then we don't have an objection to that at all.
Right. And if we want the public to grasp this, I think the worst thing we can do is tell them, you can't have a lawn in your backyard or your front yard. This is a small list of plants, so give them as many options as possible. When you said one of them, one of the developments had, didn't allow any turf in the backyard, I thought...
Irrigated turf.
Okay.
So Bahia.
Okay.
See, that's what, in Osceola County, all the backyards are Bahia, 'cause if you go to the University of Florida Recommendations and you look for drought-tolerant, does not require irrigation, there's only one on the list, Bahia. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is, in North Florida, Brian Unruh, we are developing all kinds of new varieties of Bahia that don't have some of the characteristics that people don't like about it. The blades are different, they don't matter the spikes. So, you know, there will be new varieties. Again, if the university understands that this is what we need, the university will focus their plant breeding efforts to come up with varieties that meet these goals. And, you know, but we need pressure from you all. And we need the public, and we need the developers to say, "We need this kind of solution." Because the university's political, too, and we respond. And if it's the turf growers that are funding our research, and the turf growers want us to do Empire Zoysia and do proprietary varieties that they can then sell and have patents on, you know, that happens. I don't know if you all, did y'all know that? Did you know that that kind of thing happens out in the real world? I'm being snarky again, I'm sorry.
One of the areas that I think the University of Florida has really excelled in is that I plant a lot of your fruit-bearing trees, that we could never plant apples and peaches and things that never did well here, that you've now developed that will bear fruit without having bitter cold winters every year. But the, I think for, in my mind, to wrap it up and see what the rest of the council wants to do, I think these... Glenn said something last time that really brought it home for me, and he said, "I don't know what it means." Y'all don't know what it means, Ed. You haven't defined LID, so... And that's not fair. We can't ask the developer, home builder, to say, "Okay, you gotta do this," and we're kinda shooting in the dark. I think we have to get together, and maybe staff can bring us this information of what do we wanna have included? You know, when we went to that conference, there was a giant book given, well, that we downloaded from, was it Kansas State?
Yes.
The LID manual, and it's got lots of information, and it almost buries you with information. So I think we need to decide, well, what can we start with that they could... Home builders, developers could begin to use. And then how do we, maybe we incentivize that instead of saying, you know, "Do this or get fined." But we've gotta get started.
There's one thing I would say. There's this presumption of the conventional Florida landscape. There is the presumption of irrigation. I didn't grow up in homes, I was raised in Florida, born in Jacksonville, lived in, actually, Ormond Beach for a year, then Melbourne, which is where I went wrong. But the need for irrigation in those landscapes, I mean, that we can, that's the outside-of-the-box thought, is presume, don't plant all the turf you want, just plant turf that's not gonna get irrigated. That's the out-of-the-box idea. And of course, that's the idea that City of St. Cloud, Osceola County, and some of the jurisdictions, because of the constraints of consumptive use permit, not for protecting the environment, just because the water management district's gonna parse out the water that's available, and different water utilities are gonna, some are gonna win, some are gonna lose, and those that have good, strong conservation programs are gonna win. And so that's the really, the whole idea of source control. So that long book that you're talking about from Kansas, and the effort to try and explain LID, well, you gotta look at every single and calculate, do the engineering calculations and all of that for the benefit. Why don't you start with source control? Start with eliminating the nutrient pollutant from the watershed. Start there. So I'm saying, treat it as a water conservation strategy, which everybody can get behind. Now, go back and look at your more conventional swales and following the natural pathway that the water would have followed, maximize percolation, or... I'm just, I think that's always gonna be confusing, and I think then when you go and try and get credit for it from, you know, that's always gonna be the issue, is if I do this, do I still have to do that? That's what the developers wanna know, 'cause if you tell them, yes, you still have to have that volume control structure. And if you wanna do those LID things, that's all, that's good, we encourage it, but you don't get any more credit for it. So it just immediately just costs more with no real understanding of the benefit. And so I would just, that would be the real message, is start with source control. Think about the compost, what Hillsborough County and others, Charlotte County's doing the same thing, City of Newbury is about ready to, but one answer is starting to pop up around the state. That is a potential alternative that still gives you opportunities to make grass look good, landscapes look good. So I think that's probably the most significant thing I would want you to consider, is the possibility of source control.
Okay. Barbara Germain?
I keep coming back to, we have to rethink, re-educate, and retrain, and, like you said, let the community know, especially new people coming to the area, that that doesn't have to be the expectation. I think that's a big part of it, so I agree with you, to just redirect, right? I do have a question of staff, though. And I don't recall, unless I missed it, the conversation for Volusia consumptive use, where we are in regards to consumptive use and our status.
Mike Ulrich, Utilities Director. From the concept of the utility standpoint, yes, we're currently in our process right now. We are gonna be working with Cities of Deland, Deltona, Orange City, to develop a master plan among ourselves as to how we share the resources in terms of reclaimed water. Recharge is a key element of what we're attempting to do right now, rather than, again, relying upon more groundwater from outside sources, but recharge is a strategy along with reclaimed. So we're going through the district process right now. Aaron, Dr. Aaron Reed is working on that process with us. Reminder again, we're one of 16 utilities, and we're working with the ones in West Volusia. Every one of the cities have their own consumptive use permits, some much more generous than others in terms of what they're able to do. So it's, again, it's a balance, but of course, we're doing every effort that we can, particularly in West Volusia, primarily because, again, we've got the springs to deal with in protecting the springs and the minimum flow levels that are mandated within those springs right now. So to answer your question, we're in the process. Ours is coming due, and we're trying to get an approval for a new cup for the next five years.
So when new developments come on, and we have to look at that number, right? That the impact of that new development on the water supply.
Right.
Right? So how do we evaluate that? Is it a percentage of... What does that number look like?
Well, let me explain it by the fact that all of the areas that we serve in West Volusia, City of DeBury, Deltona, very little is in unincorporated Volusia County. So, I mean, with regards to that, we've discussed with them, we learn about what they're planning, we tell them about, you know, what's anticipated in terms of our, you know, what water is going to be available. We keep them apprised, as we're trying to stay ahead of the game with regards to increasing the reclaimed water. But, I mean, some of these ideas with regards to low-impact development and everything, and, you know, what we've just heard today, encouraging, and again, the word to get out to some of these cities is gonna be a, is gonna be a major, you know, should be a very encouraging opportunity, I guess you could say, to educate them as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That was one of the things, you keep talking about the west side, and I understand why, but there again, I think that's where we have to have that collaboration with the east side, the cities, you know? Because what they're developing, let's say Daytona, and how much they're, it does affect us, it affects all of us. and how much they're, it does affect us, it affects all of us, and if we don't have that conversation together, this is critical, you know, that we're all talking on the same page. They may have different guidelines, but we all need to be talking on the same page where we can come together and compromise. I just think that conversation has to be had. It can't just be us. We can't lead the, I mean, we can maybe lead it, but we can't just, it can't all fall on us, because their development, if something, if they're overdeveloping and they're having problems, it does reflect on us.
Saltwater.
Yeah, there you go. So, I think that unified conversation, work group, whatever you want to have, I think that is of vital importance.
Good. Before we wrap it up, we have one more member of the public who wanted to speak, Kelly McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, honourable members of County Council. I'm Kelly McGee, Executive Director of the Riverside Conservancy. Thank you for today. I see this as promise kept. You know, we had four members of the County Council attend the LID workshop in Brevard County both days, and I believe that's more than any other jurisdiction, even in Brevard County. People came up to me afterwards and were remarking about the leadership of Volusia County. You've heard about regulatory, non-regulatory ways to promote water quality, and one of the best things you can do is speak with that unified voice about water quality. We should be doing everything that we can, whether it's large scale, all waters connected, wildlife corridors, small-scale conservation easements along the riverfront. You know, we should be considering all of these things, and you're doing that. And thank you, thank you to staff for putting this together. The Aquarius website looks amazing. I'm gonna need a tutorial on that, the water quality data that you guys are bringing in, that's phenomenal. I don't know of any other county that is, has anything nearly as comprehensive as that. You've already started making space for nature-based solutions in your ECO program by allowing those to go forward, and just would request that you would give the same consideration to even Volusia forever, because that could actually create incentives for existing property owners, not just new development. So, anyway, with that, thank you so much, really appreciate this workshop. This is, this is how we get from the academics to the on-the-ground built environment, is by you all taking the leadership role and setting the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the three of you and maybe to Clay as well, is it possible, well, let me back up, do you have a list of LID standards or, can you bring those to, I'm looking at Clay because he's the one shaking his head, for the county, just for the council to consider? And then one other thing, is your name's, okay, before I do that, Heather Post.
So, on that note, I saw Clay nodding his head back there, but we had a low-impact development presentation or, I don't know what you call it, I guess, presentation from, from staff where we had actually asked staff to come back and discuss low-impact development. So, you know, not to reinvent the wheel, but we have talked about this before, and so maybe we can bring back or forward that information to us again, just so that we have it. Nodding of head, yes?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. And we do have one more member of the public who wanted to speak. Clay, I want to ask you, you don't have to come up, but if you would think about this, and if I don't make it clear, I'll email it to you. This actually came from a member of the audience, a member of the public who was here with my discussion about wetlands and asking about, you know, how are we impacting them when we build right up around it? And the suggestion was that we maybe change the language in our comp plan to preserve wetland hydrological connectivity, instead of just saying, you know, protective in the ordinance, and just saying wetland and buffer area protection. So, maybe we could discuss that even, you know, personally or whatever, see what we would have to do there. And then, William Mans? It's not Mans, is it? Oh. You have, you have three minutes.
And I do thank all of you, you're very attentive. I've been in front of the DeBarry City Council, and they couldn't care less from, in my opinion, there was-
You're running time.
I know. I did write down a few things, and I'd like to start out with something maybe you can all agree on, maybe you should, I don't know if you even get paid, but I think you should get paid a good salary, and that people that make critical decisions need to be paid and work full-time so they can make intelligent decisions, and also to help with those intelligent decisions, to have regular training like this, education, and maybe even testing to make sure they're not sleeping during it. We need the head that's operating the body and telling me what to do with my homestead to be as, at least as intelligent as I am. I went to master gardener class, I also was a landscaper for years, Mans Plants Florida, and I had the Franklin Tree Service and the master's school, I'm not the master, Jesus Christ is the master, my master, and anyone can take my martial arts school. But I'm retired now. Now, I'm trying to help other people. I haven't brought up the fact, I'm just talking in general, trying to help the environment, like, trying to help the environment, and I, even when I go in front of DeBarry, I kind of let's, I don't have time in my three minutes to complain about them taking two full months of my income for a fine because I have a University of Florida certified natural yard, and they don't like it. Well, anybody has to complain. Some idiot neighbor who has, somebody mowing their grass for fifty dollars a week and fertilizing and spraying pesticides, they could complain about my yard. My electric bill's thirty to sixty dollars a month, okay? Because I have trees everywhere. If you know how to go do the earth thing, I'm a twelve DeBarry drive, one mile north. I'm not contributing to the pollution in the river like the people who fertilize and do all that other stuff. So, I think you guys should get a good pay, at work time, devote yourself to this full-time. And also, I should say about what a nice yard looks like, my uncle, who's deprecating, God rest his soul, he had a house in Colorado where ziriscaping started, and this is thirty years ago, nobody could have a lawn, they had prairie grass in their yards, and he said, "My house is a million dollars, I'm the poor one in the neighborhood." But everybody had to have a stone roof in case of fire. So, there's intelligent ways to live with nature, not against it. And, you know, we shouldn't feed the beast devouring Mother Nature. I protest the killing of that mother bear with her through three children who was only defending her cubs, and that mother bear could have killed the person. I saw the lady who was attacked, she had a few superficial scratches on her. So, there could have been a better way than killing the mother and leaving them homeless. God bless you all.
Danny, did you take that as a motion, that part that he said about raising our pay or that we should, were you gonna second that, or what? Did you have something else to say?
I think you might get that.
I was focusing on working full-time on this job.
You gotta take a test. Yes, that's true critical.
Go ahead, Danny.
Not just us people alive today, but all people down the road are gonna feel. Oh, and by the way, I forgot, what happened to all the birds? That's the thing I've been getting from Gemini Springs.
We like a little bit of energy every once in a while. Thank you. No, I just wanted to thank you guys, and Pierce, thank you so much. You know, it brought a lot of clarity, and I learned something in business, sometimes you have to catch them with honey. And this is just, this is just it to me. You know, there's a thousand ways to skin this cat. As we evolve, we need to hear this, and something I'd be interested in doing, and I know I talked about it with Kelly McGee, is how do we get your message out there? Because it is a little bit of softer approach, it takes that education and maybe not regulation end of it, but how do we get your message out there, whether it's when we have people applying for online permitting or PUDs, hey, can they watch your video, or can we make a video? And just giving people options. Folks love options, we don't like being told what to do, but we love options, but if we don't know about them, then we're only hurting ourselves. So, that's something I'm looking forward to discussing with my colleagues. You know, because as we break this down and look at it, you know, I like how you put it out there in terms of, hey, maximizing green space, less roads, maybe relooking on how we cluster those homes, because the problem that we face here a lot is people don't like change, people don't like growth itself. This doesn't say that there isn't going to be any of that, it's not going to be saying there isn't going to be any bit of clearing, but what do we do afterwards to mitigate some of these issues? Because you still have to clear the property, we know that, you know, but what are we doing afterwards that are better practices than what we've been doing before? And that's what I took out and liked from your presentation, and it just gave everybody, I think, a full scope and kind of settled the mood a little bit on where this can go or where it is going. But once again, thank you, good job, and I look forward to hopefully seeing you again. So, thank you. Ben Johnson.
Staff, I want to thank you for doing a great job today, and also you gave us a lot of great information, and Doc, you did a great job too, of kind of putting it together to end what we can do. And you have to be quite a man to get Max Stein up from his nap in the afternoon to be here. But we appreciate it, we thank you for everything and all of y'all, the job you did today.
I think that's ditto from everybody. Heather Post?
So, Council, I know that we have a workshop scheduled for growth and to discuss more on low-impact development, but I'd really like to ensure, because we're talking today, but I definitely want to continue this conversation, so I'm hoping that we can set aside time within a council meeting to actually fully discuss as a council this and really where we're headed. So, hoping that's in the plans soon. Yes, but soon, not, you know, eight months from now.
My feeling of the, at least of the sense of the council is that everybody here is interested in not just ending this today, is, boy, wasn't that fun? And y'all went to a lot of work and brought us real good information. It'll continue, it should continue, we talk about it and makes some changes where it needs to be changed and-
So, Mr., were you done, Heather? I'm sorry, were you finished? So, I think that-
No, I brought it in.
I think that is the intent, but, you know, so where does that leave us? That leaves us, if we want to discuss it again, bringing it up in open discussion. So, I don't think open discussion is where this needs to be had, and I really think we need to set aside time, either in the next meeting or the meeting after, or the meeting after, or all three, to really discuss. So, I'd like to see it on an upcoming agenda to where we're actually discussing and not in open discussion.
I think some of this, and I'll let, I see his name, I'll let George correct me or give you more information, but I think some of this was already gonna, was planned to come up with the growth and management.
Correct. Actually, the timing of the doctor's discussion at the end of this meeting was meant to be a bridge right into discussion that we were going to have with growth management and the development rules, which are one tool of water quality. I mean, we went over one of the many things we're doing between what we're doing as a utility, what we're doing as a stormwater, what we're doing to monitor it, and then the other part, of course, is mentioned, what do we do to prevent it in the future? And that was the tie-in to making some changes possibly in our growth management and development rules.
So, I realize that we're having that workshop discussion and that this is, this was certainly a preface for that, but what I'm asking is that in our next meeting, maybe the meeting after, maybe in the meetings, each meeting leading up to that, that we actually set aside some time. It sounds as if, from what we're being provided, that there is lots and lots of information out there, there's lots of ideas, there's lots of things that we could be discussing. It doesn't have to be a workshop in every council meeting, but certainly an agenda item or at least for council to learn about something or to discuss something leading up to our workshop. That's, that would be my suggestion and my hope.
Billy.
Yeah, I think I know, I think I'm hearing what you're seeing, what's next? And are we going to get a, set, what are we going to do next and when are we going to do it? You know, what, if staff with all the information that you provided, I'm sure you have ideas exactly what needs to go next, you know, and there are some of them in here, and I prefaced it earlier saying, yes, I want to move forward with all of that, but I want to make sure that conversation is there and that we're going to have it and not six months down the road still discussing it. So, however we get to the next step, I really would like to have their input, but, yeah, I still want to talk at some point about a work group, so.
Barbara.
Thanks, Chair. I, I guess, along with Heather, I'm interested to know where we go from here, and I guess part of my concern is guidance for developers, right, to give a longer lead-in to, you know, what those options are and what those expectations are, or to give an overview of where we're going with the list of these items, and you need to have a certain amount of these, you know, built into your plan, or I just want to ensure that we're moving it forward as well, because I just think it's a critical time right now with how much is on the landscape. So, I think, I think time is important. So, I'm looking forward to that feedback and the best guidance for next steps, and I would like to see at least the listing and information come to us prior to the next workshop, so wherever we're going, we have more of the meat to make some of those decisions. I also want to say, I'm really happy that we asked staff to do this today. In the last three years since I've been here, and I've seen how much work the staff has done on a number of different projects and initiatives, I've always said, you don't tout your efforts enough. We're not communicating it to the public how much work and how much effort has gone in to a lot of the initiatives, and especially around the water. And it's difficult when you see it in parts and pieces versus you're seeing a holistic view of how much you've done and the impact that it's had on our, on our county and communities. And I just think it's important, not only in this category, but so many other categories. I think it's important that we give you that opportunity to be represented, because it's a lot of work and you make us proud. So, I just want to say thanks for, for those efforts, and thanks to the council for also agreeing to have this done.
Dr. Lowry?
I echo that sentiment. Great job. Obviously, you were here all day, you didn't get a day's work in, but appreciate you being here and all the work that you did. And I think we have to remember, our job up here on the dais isn't to get into the weeds and micromanage specifics, but our job is to give direction. And I think, I think the staff, as we are sitting here today, my colleagues agree that we have to say that, been doing a good job beyond, we're beyond the minimums. There's some areas need to work on, there's some things been presented today, and I, like Ms. Wheeler, I like to see staff come back to us with some of their recommendations. I mean, Ginger's probably forgotten more about water than any of us up here will ever know. And to, for us to try to figure that out on our own is kind of silly. I think we let our staff do their job, they do a great job, and let them come back at a later time with some recommendations and ideas that they might have. a later time with some recommendations and ideas that they might have. Thank you.
Heather Post?
So, um, that was really my suggestion, uh, said differently, I guess, but, uh, Mike, um, is it possible to get, so we've heard a lot of ordinance information from other counties. Ginger, you mentioned, uh, the west side of the state has a lot of stuff. Doctor, you mentioned a couple. I would love to see those ordinances, um, if we could get copies of some of that stuff and then any additional that staff might be aware of, so that we could sort of get a feel for what other areas are doing, um, in one pile before we come back. Thank you. Now, I don't want to, I don't want to end today without also saying, Ginger, you, you are amazing, and you, um, the environmental division is just, um, it's, you work on so many, so many different things. I'm, I'm constantly amazed at the various aspects of your division, um, but my point is that you guys are dedicated to this, right? This is your, this is your whole life, this is your profession, and there's a lot of really good people within your division and Mike's division, um, that are dedicating their lives and their professions to this. We need to do what we can to make you successful in this role, and I think that's very important for us to do. So the, any input that we can get from you to do that is, is very helpful, um, because we need to ensure that you are here doing what you can for Volusia County and not putting any blockages in your way, so, thank you. But thank you for all your work.
And then, Mike, you were okay? Okay. Just, Mike, quick, short list, and it's not all that has to come back to the council, but, um, one, Clay, what we, I just mentioned earlier about the wetland connectivity, I'd like to pursue that a little bit more. Michael, the deep well injection, this doesn't have to come back to council, but if you just email me info, because I think it is, eventually the council, I think, will, we, we may need to act on it, so it's a good, it's going to be a legislative thing with a state of Florida, but, um, I think we need to get ahead of that because they're increasing. And then Ginger, how can we help you? Is there anything we can do with fertilizer ordinances, and what can we still do locally, legally? And then probably the biggest thing is what can we put together for LID, um, requirements or, or LID principles, so that when I say LID, Glenn doesn't look at me like I've got a third eye in the middle of my head and says, "Well, you don't even know what that means." So, pardon me? Oh, so, um, yeah, Dr. Jones, you went, you went a long way in, in teaching us not just what LID is, but, um, that it doesn't need to be hammered. The development community doesn't need to be hammered with it, but it's something that improves their end product and improves our environment, and we, I think this council is united in that we all have to work together to make those things happen, to have our community be the best possible, and, um, so, anybody else have any final thoughts? If not, then thank you all again. Um, thank you, the public who spent a long day incoming, and, um, Dr. Jones, thank you very much.